Richard Peterson.
Here.
Jahy Simbi.
Here.
Vivian Voss.
Here.
Scott Ohm.
Here.
Melissa Antle.
Here.
Will Kearns.
Here.
Dan Larson.
Here.
Janet Leo.
Here.
Thank you.
The next order on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve the order of the agenda? Are there additions or corrections to the agenda? Raise your hand to vote yes. Call for a vote. We're voting yes we approve the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the order of minutes for...
I didn't bring any out, sorry.
I guess we'll not approve those tonight. This is the time for any person to speak on any subject not appearing on tonight's agenda. Is anyone signed up to speak? I will close the public forum. And now, is there any new business?
Yes, thank you. So, we have two items tonight to talk about. We'll keep the first one fairly brief because we kept the memo pretty detailed. So, we'll still have time for questions certainly about the People Speak. But I know the reason that we wanted to have the training was to kind of get into the topics that you all had some questions on. So, we're aware of that. We'll definitely have room for questions and answers. But I think right now we'll just go ahead and start talking about the People Speak platform. So, a lot of this was summarized in the memo, but in general, over the last year or more, and particularly during the NRS update, we have increasingly heard people, as they've said, that they want to be heard more, they want to be more meaningfully participating in decision-making, they want to feel more in control or more involved at least in some of the changes that folks are seeing in the built environment. And we get that. You're probably hearing that too. Even in the testimony you heard for the protest procedure, you heard some comments on wanting to be involved and some comments on the inconvenience of coming to public hearings. And I think we can all agree that it's challenging. We're all here tonight on a weeknight, but it's challenging for a lot of people to routinely participate in weeknight meetings and public hearings, and we get that. When we ask, when we get asked, "How can you participate if you can't attend?", you know, the answer is, "Well, you can give us written comments and we'll include them in the staff report." You get the staff reports. You see that there's not a ton of written comments that come to staff because folks want to talk to decision-makers, right? So, we know that people are commenting on Facebook and on Nextdoor when there's a development application. We are allowed to look at that, but you're not allowed to look at that as decision-makers, right? That's ex parte contact. Council can't look at that either. And it really limits your ability to know sort of what people are thinking, particularly on a quasi-judicial case, maybe less so on a code amendment. As Mr. Dahl likes to say, "We all live in the real world," and we know that ex parte contact is really hard to avoid in a small community. And we think that a tool like People Speak really gives you and decision-makers an easy way to deflect those conversations that are likely to happen in the grocery store and give us, give folks a way to participate, give you something to send them to so that their comments don't have to come through us or through our email, but they go directly to a portal. They're visible, it's transparent, you're seeing it, they're seeing that you're seeing it. So, in short, People Speak is really just a website where we post our staff report and our presentation for an upcoming public hearing item, and the public can review those documents and submit their comments. Ours would be called Wheat Ridge Speaks. Lakewood has Lakewood Speaks. They actually created the platform from scratch. They identified the same patterns that we're seeing in the desire of the public to engage. And they built the platform with a software developer out of Boulder. So, they've been working on it for, I guess, maybe two years now with their planning commission, and the better part of a year with their city council. They shared their story with us, and we shared some of their data with you. Personally, I find some of those graphs to be pretty compelling in terms of really allowing a more representative group to participate in the public hearing process. I think the line graph is not showing anything we didn't know. A lot of folks don't come to 7:00 PM meetings. A lot of folks aren't commenting at 7:00 PM online. People are busy in the evenings, but the platform gives folks the convenience of sort of whenever they can during the 10 days before a meeting to make the comments. So, we think it's a really good solution. It's convenient, it's online, folks can learn about a case, comment at their convenience, submit comments directly into the record, see that you're seeing them. I think we included a lot of questions and answers in the packets, a lot of screenshots. The one takeaway I want you to know is that we're not changing any of our current process. It doesn't change the public hearing. It doesn't replace the public hearing. It doesn't change us posting signs or mailing letters or publishing staff reports or taking comment in person. So, it mimics that in sort of a parallel way and very transparent way to allow just one additional venue for folks to comment. It doesn't allow you to engage with the public, so it's really limited in sort of that one-way communication in the same way that comment at the podium would be. So, we're bringing this to you tonight to sort of gauge your feeling and your level of support on the platform. We're taking it to council on Monday evening to ask the same question. Ultimately, it's sort of their decision, but we did go ahead and put it in the 2020 budget optimistically. If we do decide to move forward, we will do a technical training, sort of not in this forum, but like upstairs at a computer. You'll all get a login. You have to use your login, your sort of planning commissioner, decision-maker login, because when you review the comments, once you're logged in, it will automatically track the comments that you've seen or not seen. We've talked to Mr. Dahl about the platform. It sort of passes all the legal muster that we can figure out so far. We spent quite a lot of time internally. We watched a 90-minute webinar. We met with the planning director in Lakewood. We spent, well, we started learning about this maybe in May, so we spent sort of months now sort of iterating on this idea. And ultimately, we just really think it's a good way to make the public hearing process more public and more inclusive. Anything you want to add? Maybe I'll stop there.
Just, I mean, give credit to Lauren for kind of identifying this. She and I think Stephanie at the same time watched this. It was actually a national APA webinar that was local, right? It was Lakewood that was doing this more innovative approach to public engagement. So, she asked me to look at it, and I think I had the same reaction that she did, which is, "We should do this." So, we hope you agree. We hope city council agrees, but we think it's a great way to be responsive to what we're hearing out there in the community in terms of people wanting to be heard, as Lauren has already said.
Any questions? Do you want to filter your questions?
Yeah, go ahead. We'll start down there.
How are you advertising this? How are you getting it out to the citizens that this is available?
If we were to go that way, how would we advertise it? So, a couple of things that we would change, the very obvious things that we're already doing. So, right now, you get a letter if you're within 300 feet of a property. We would encourage people to not submit any comments to us anymore. It would all go through the platform. So, all of our legal notices would change and say, "This is the official, you know, receptacle of all public comment." It'd be on the city's website. I imagine, in my mind, it's a sort of new marketing technique of, "How do I participate?" One, you comment online. Two, you attend in person. Three, you watch it live or later. And we sort of, I'd, in a perfect world, love to broadcast that as sort of far and wide as we could. You know, we'd work with our public information officer and our social media tech to sort of educate, go through sort of a public education phase of, "This is a new tool that we have, and we encourage you to use it." To comment as a citizen, you don't have to create an account. So, I think that the barrier to entry is supremely low, and the onus is on us to share the tool.
When would you advertise to? When would you start?
When's the comment period open?
No, when would you actually start using the portal?
That we haven't figured out yet. Couple logistical things. So, we'd need to buy a microphone, and we would essentially record the presentation that you see in advance. We need to find some space for that. We might just be using our, the two offices that we have upstairs. We need to look at the active caseload we have, and we've never told an applicant that they have this, so we need to find sort of a logical point. We'd like to do it as soon as possible in 2020, if that's the direction that we go, but we don't have a date identified yet. I don't.
Any more, so have any questions?
I have a bunch of questions. First, we can go to the pie charts, which I agree are pretty impressive. Could you attach numbers to the third pie chart, average numbers over the period of time that that was covered? In other words, how many people from the community actually speak? And this could be five people.
It could be, yeah. One of the charts that we didn't share, let me see if I have it real quick right here. It may be something we need to ask Lakewood staff, but they had given us some sample information in one of the trainings, you know, "What's the order of magnitude?" You know, "We get two comments in person, are we going to get 200 we have to read?", right? It was not that. It was like, I think the most they had with the time they shared it with us was maybe 20. There was a bar graph I screenshotted. Hang on. Okay. Source of public input, in the webinar that we had referenced earlier in the year, they had eight cases. And at that moment, the most volume they got online was 15, and for that case, in-person, they got six. Their numbers appear to be similar to ours, where the in-person comments were like 1, 4, 2, 6, 5, and the respective online comments were just maybe double or triple that, but not higher than 15.
So, there is more participation?
That's what they were seeing.
A wider range of people?
Correct.
They don't attach a real number to that. That's okay.
They probably have the data. We don't have that data.
Yeah, the pie chart tells us it's a wider range, but I just don't know who. Another question I have has to do, it's actually the, it's at the bottom of the second page, which is, "How would the Wheat Ridge Speaks platform change our current practice?" And it made me start to wonder, and then as I read more, I wondered more. It seems that the applicant is led off easily in this procedure. And it seems like everybody else has to make a presentation, but the applicant, oh, you use a funny phrase, "if enabled." I don't know what that means. Does that mean if they choose to?
There's a feature of the platform where we can enable, we can either choose to use that or not, where citizens can ask questions of staff or ask questions of the applicant. It's like a module.
When you were talking about this, did you talk about requiring the applicant to make a statement? A concept?
Right.
I mean, when we sit in here, some applicants have very elegant statements, some just say, "I don't know anything." And it seems that it would add a lot to the whole presentation, especially if that person isn't present when you're reading this. It would add a lot if there was actually a presentation from the applicant. Did you talk about that at all?
We don't require it.
We require certain things of applicants in terms of minimums and middle requirements, but in terms of actual, historically, what we require them to do or not to do at a public hearing, it's always been our practice, for better or worse, and I don't know if Dahl has an opinion on this or not. Dahl, Mr. Jerry Dahl, our city attorney. So, this would be no different than current practice in that we don't, we give them an opportunity to provide a presentation, but we don't require them to. And I don't disagree. I mean, I think many applicants would be benefited by taking that opportunity more seriously and having a good presentation, but we don't require it. So, this would be no different than current practice.
It just seems to me that it makes it more rich.
Sure.
If, in reading it, you actually have a presentation. And I understand there are technical requirements for what they have to submit, but I'm talking more about sort of full paragraphs of discussion about, "This is what we want to do, this is why we want to do it in Wheat Ridge, this is the impact we think it might have on the community." So, a little bit of prose might help.
We almost always coach somebody to sort of tell their story. What do you want to do and why? We can't tell your story for you. They don't always listen to us, so...
Would they listen to you if you required it?
We require a cover letter. Like, you, they, we do get something in writing to say, "Here's what I want to do and why." It is not always elegant prose. It is rarely elegant prose.
And in the stuff we get, it's buried.
Yeah.
Well, remembering that a requirement's a requirement, so therefore, it's a requirement on everybody that applies, okay? And we get applicants that have staff and are professionals that you are kind of thinking, I think, in your head, "Yeah, they, by God, they ought to be able to put something together." But there's also, we've had any number of times, as you well know, because you see them first and then we see them at council, a young couple, or a couple, or an individual who wants to have a rezoning, wants to do something. And if you're going to require it, you require it of that person too.
Sure.
And at some point, you know, we get pushback for requirements that are too onerous, especially for the, for the layperson and the unrepresented person. Now, that's not to say that you can't and shouldn't and absolutely have to require people that want to, want something, you know, they want a rezoning, and we're sorry that you don't have a lot of staff or anything, it's just your house, but there's a minimum level of what we need to hear from you so we can evaluate your application. And yes, you could, you know, the council could consider requiring that as an additional, what amounts to a submission requirement, you know?
Could you?
For consistency, what we will require is if you want to do a presentation as an applicant at the in-person hearing, you must have it prepared to be online. If it's not online, it's not in person because it has to be, we're trying to mimic it as much as possible. So, they can still respond to questions at the in-person, but that, that will be conveyed as sort of, "You've got time to think about this ahead of time." Often, we work with folks for a period of a year, and if they still don't want to go to the podium, like, that's kind of on them to not tell their story.
So, if the planning, typically, the planning commission is the recommending body to city council along what you're thinking. So, if the applicant did not do something of preparation in advance, which I kind of understand why they wouldn't, because then you have more fuel, you know, beforehand the meeting.
Yeah, that's exactly, that's exactly why.
Because I work on the other side. I know how it works, because I'm on, I sit on the other side of the table too. And, but what I'm, what I wonder is that technically, so if the applicant doesn't have to do it, but then they come in for the planning commission and we record their presentation, could you then take that presentation and put it on that document in preparation for the city council meeting?
Yeah, that's a good question. So, we wouldn't record their presentation at council or at planning commission, but we reset the portal for each public hearing. So, if they decide, "I didn't do anything at planning commission, went down in flames, I probably should have told my story," they can do that through Wheat Ridge Speaks in advance at the council meeting and then do that same presentation at the council meeting. So, you know, sometimes comments from you change how things are presented at council.
That's what they want to say.
Yeah.
That same argument would apply to a statement from the applicant influencing what people in the community might want to say. So, it's sort of like, give them full information. Let the people in the community know what's going on.
Yeah. Some people do themselves a disservice in their presentations, and some people do themselves a service. So, I think that's why we sort of let the onus fall on the applicant. Silence is sometimes helpful and sometimes not, depending on the applicant we're dealing with, in our experience.
I'm not sure that should be their decision, the applicant's decision.
That's fair. And that's probably independent of Wheat Ridge Speaks, right? That would...
Well, I'm not going to say...
Yeah. When we, this issue is independent of this portal in that we could be requiring every applicant to come to the podium in person, right?
Right. Yeah. If you want me to suggest that, I would do that. Because I think, quite often, it's really helpful to have them stand up there and talk a little bit about what they're thinking about. I think about some of the really good presentations we've had and some really kind of miserable presentations where you're kind of left in the dark about what's going on.
Yeah. So, right to remain silent type thing. Sorry, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to say, to Scott's point, I mean, depending on what side you sit on on an issue like them to be, like, so how does the developer know how to present in an unbiased way? You know, he's like going to have to read a document, you know, so it can work in his favor or it could work against him.
Well, they have to be truthful, whether it's for or against or whatever, they have to be truthful to what they want to say.
Well, I, exactly, for sure. You know, and when you're just following the requirements, I think it's pretty straightforward what you're trying to do as opposed to when you tell your story. It's like how you tailor that or customize that. Sometimes that automatically starts to pit people into camps. I mean, you know, that's my perspective, right? And clearly, we all look at these things differently.
Commissioner Leo.
Is this the platform set up for project projects that are on the agenda? Or can people use it to talk about something?
That's a good question. So, this platform is specifically set up for an item that's scheduled for a public hearing. It could, and it, and what we've recommended is it would only be for items for a public hearing that are coming out of the planning division. So, it could be a code amendment, could be an adoption of a subarea plan, could be a development case. We are actively creating a sort of wider community engagement strategy and exploring other software options and techniques to engage people on like, you know, the 44th subarea planning process, or what do we want the green to look like, or sort of other types of more planning phase projects or engagement projects. But this would specifically be mimicking the public hearing component of a project.
So, how do you keep that from, how do you keep people from using that?
That's a good question too. So, each page, when you, did, did any of you get a chance to look at the Lakewood Speaks page? There's a link and you go, and it's one webpage about one specific land use case. So, the screenshot probably shows this fairly well. On screenshot B, so there's nowhere to comment other than on that project or agenda item. There's no other, like, open comment forum, and all comments are actually moderated. So, there's a comment policy. Lakewood has one, we probably adopted something similar about like, it's more about being like crude and lewd, and they haven't had an issue with it, but we could say, "Sorry, that's completely on, we know we get things that are tangentially related." If something's like completely unrelated, then we can say, "And please resubmit your comment. It's been moderated for X, Y, and Z reason." So, I don't think we'll have too much of an issue, but it's a good question. Yeah.
Commissioner Larson. Go ahead.
The first part of my question has to do with the format of, the format of the material submitted. The, it looks like there will be a PDF attached on the main page of staff's report. Where does the, if the applicant is making a comment, where does that go?
Same, so...
Same place?
Yep. So, where, on that same screenshot B, where you see planning division staff report highlighted in orange, we could attach as many attachments right in that same list as we needed to. So, if, usually, the applicant's documents, to your point, Commissioner Peterson, are sort of embedded in our staff report, but we can break things out and say, site plan, applicant narrative, things like that. But it would all show up in orange in that list right there.
And the applicant could submit a video, a, whatever sort of a format that they're...
Yes.
They feel would be most effective?
Yes. So, on that same screenshot, you see a video link for the staff presentation, where I put the red comment box right next to it, could be where the applicant's video is. And I anticipate that we'd give folks the opportunity to use our microphone and sort of office to record something should they want to, to post.
Their submission would be required a certain, certain number of days prior to the hearing?
Yes. So, the timing of this shifts our deadlines a little bit. So, you typically get a staff package from us a week before. We would anticipate everything being on here 10 days before. So, we'll have our deadlines pushed back a little bit to meet that. And then comments would be open for about eight days. We're recommending that they close like Tuesday noon before your meeting. You can wa, you can read the comments as they're coming in, but that gives you two nights to catch up.
And planning commission, commissioners interested in asking a question at that time, or are we waiting for the hearing?
We always invite any question at any time to staff.
Okay. The, you mentioned the comments are reviewed for content, and that just makes a lot of sense, and that's kind of the reality of, of social media. But my question is if, are the comments given weight? I guess the question is. Oftentimes, when there's a project, for example, that the federal government's looking at public lands and they're soliciting public comments on a project, and what will happen is that people will cut and paste the same statement, and you'll get 20,000 people commenting on a particular project, all saying the same thing. When it looks like, hey, all of these people are opposed or in favor of something simply by the numbers. Is there a way to account for that? I mean, it doesn't sound like if 25 people comment publicly that they're against a project and two people say, "Hey, no, I think it's a good idea," that would tend to carry a little weight from the commissioner's point of view, looking at this, say, "Hey, maybe there is a lot of opposition to this."
I mean, so in my opinion, the beauty of this is that it exactly mimics the public hearing. So, you have the same challenge when you have eight people come to a meeting, seven of them say, "I hate it, I hate it, I hate it, I hate it," verbatim, right? And one person says, "I love it." Is that representative? Is that how the whole general population feels? It's, it's, it's the exact same challenge. I don't have an answer for you, but it's the same challenge that you're already facing. Can you turn your mic on?
And, you know, I agree with Lauren. I have complete trust in your sophistication because you know...
Be careful with that.
Hang on. Because you know, I mean, you just identified, okay, this, that we can see what a cut and paste is. This not, you, none of you just fell off the turnip truck, and you know, it's not your first rodeo, and that's the last analogy I'll use tonight, I promise. No, I'm saving two. They're really fun for the training later. But, you know, I think just as in public hearings, when people will come in and say, "I've talked to 50 of my neighbors and they all," and you go, "Okay, I, maybe I believe that, maybe I don't." You're really, you get to weigh the evidence, you know, and, and you do the same thing with comments. "I hear what you're saying," but I agree with Lauren. It's the, it mimics the hearing, and you're, you're smart enough to kind of figure out, you know, where it's going in the hearing, and frankly, to give more weight sometimes to people that need to have more weight. And you think, you know, "That one's solid," and I think you do the same thing. And, and again, it's not like there's hundreds of responses. We got the data. It's something to be aware of. I think the box I'd put that in would be, "We don't do anything mechanically to weight it or something and try to outthink it." Instead, you put it in the same box as your judgment when you hear things, and you apply your good judgment to it, and that's why you're the commission. I'm, I'm very comfortable with that, honestly.
What we're not trying to do is crowdsource land use decisions, the same as if you get a room packed, it's not a popularity vote on what your decision is, right? That's the joy of being a planning commissioner and not an elected official. You're not representing somebody who voted you in. You get to weigh that input against all of the things you all know about legal advice and criteria for review and all of those other sort of best practice planning things. So, that's what makes your job maybe a little easier in this respect. We're inviting more people to the table to have an input, but it might be more challenging for council member to have that much more input than it is for, for this particular board.
Commissioner Kearns?
There's no way for people to leave anonymous comments, correct?
Correct. So, they can maybe make up a name and make up an address, but it's a required field to put in a name and an address, same as when they come to the podium, we ask for a name and an address. The public cannot see the address, only the decision-makers can see the address.
Why does it matter to us?
If you get a bunch of comments for or against a project, and they're in Timbuktu instead of right next door, I think, you know, we, we get that question more often with the Board of Adjustment, what's the weight of the comment from whoever's making the comment relative to the property?
Can you still comment if you remain in that regard?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
And then, are you guys ready for this? This seems like more work for staff. Seems like another...
Yeah. We talked about it, and we, we sort of, I would say, we asked Travis in Lakewood that question a lot, and, you know, we haven't talked to his staff, but it's not that much different. We're uploading it to this instead of, you know, in addition to the city's website. We're recording our video in advance instead of scrambling two hours before the planning commission meeting. So, we're shifting our deadlines, we're not adding a lot of work. We're moderating comments that we maybe are otherwise getting as phone calls, walk-ins, or emails. So, it's sort of changing where and when we're doing things, but not changing a ton in terms of what we're actually doing.
Okay.
Okay, so I have to, I just want to go back to kind of like Lakewood's experience a little, because you, you talked a little bit about how you're seeing it increase participation, but overall, did they say like, we've seen like a 20% increase in participation, or, you know, like in terms of like selling this, I mean, I think it's great that we always try to increase the number of venues or ways people can participate, but you're also talking about a $20,000 a year, or close to a $20,000 a year annual investment. Like what has Lakewood, you said they got it in 17?
They, no, I forget.
Or it's been operating?
The Planning Commission in Lakewood started using it in August of 17, yep, and Council in February of this year. I, I don't, I don't recall Travis sharing a specific like 50% increase in participation. They've gotten more participation because they've gotten more comments online generally than they have in person. They're still getting the in-person comments. You will still, we will still get sort of those frequent flyers, the folks who can attend a night meeting. It's just capturing more people who weren't otherwise coming to the hearings.
Yeah, I mean, I think it'd be interesting to, you know, because I saw you had the age distribution too, you know, because there's two things we always want to see is like, one is representative of our population, and then also the amount of population, right? That's actually participating. Sorry to.
No, you're fine. I'm just gonna, I think, say something very similar to that, which is, I think, three things. Lakewood is getting more participation. They haven't tried to quantify that, but it's, I'd say fairly significantly more. It's still not huge, but it's significantly more relative to the baseline. Two, as you said, it's more representative. That's really important. And three, it's people that it would appear don't have the time or the opportunity to do it when we're holding the public hearing. So it seems like even if the, regardless of the numbers, kind of those three data points are important.
Yeah. Well, time, definitely. I mean, just because, I mean, that's another compelling graphic, is to say, oh, okay, most people, that's like dinner and family time for a lot of people. And then, so is this a pilot that you guys are doing? You said you put it in this year's budget, or is it just, I guess it's an annual membership, right?
It is. It's a monthly subscription that you purchase based on your population and the number of boards that would be using it. I think in our minds, once you go into this territory, you don't go back.
You can take it back.
Yep. And I don't think that's a bad thing. And, you know, I think the harder to quantify thing is the, we're, the demand that we're hearing for people who want to be involved, or the number of people who told me, I emailed my council member about that stupid zone change, and they didn't respond to me. And I'm like, well, you can't actually do that. And they couldn't respond to you, but, you know, in the back of my head, knowing, been thinking about this, but like I have a way that you could have felt like you were being heard. So the, you know, we're, we're actively, you know, as a basis of the interest, trying to figure like, how do you rebuild public trust? How do you engage people? How do you make people feel like they have an opportunity to be involved? Do we think everybody's going to comment on here or participate, or we're going to get a thousand percent increase? I don't think so. But what's important to me is that there's an opportunity to participate, that I don't have to tell you, well, if you can't come at seven on Thursday, you can't participate, right? Which isn't the whole answer. They can email, but that's not fulfilling. So I don't, I, I hear what you're saying, because I do think it's an important, you know, is it, is it make financial sense? But I would suggest that it's, it's important beyond just sort of the dollars and cents to have that as the outlet.
Just to add to that, and I don't know if you have the answer to this, because I don't know if they can monitor the number of kind of hits on the website. So I think you wouldn't necessarily want to measure success by the number of comments, but more by the number of, of hits. Because someone could well see the presentation, say, well, that kind of makes sense, and choose not to comment, but that comment could, that lack of comment could be meaningful, and they had an opportunity to review the information in a much more thorough way than they do right now, unless they come here on a Thursday night.
Yeah, maybe you both, maybe the reader, the app really makes it better for them to be informed, and show up, and they go, okay, I want to show up unless I'm not going to do my thousand words. You know, I'm going to show up instead, but they've, they've really got everything. So they're, they're ready when they show up here, which is what you want.
Okay. Yeah, no, I, I think it's really great, and I think for those three reasons, I mean, you know, what is our overall participation in any community from the members of the public? You know, like sometimes we're lucky if we get two to five percent participation, and it's like, if we can even move that a little bit by kind of keeping up with the way people communicate, I think it's a great idea.
I got, I got a couple of questions. The one on privacy, so you talked about the public trust and the privacy, and I'm looking at this, and it says, for the sake of privacy, the public view includes only the commenter's name, the decision maker's view includes the name and address. I think that's great. I, I oftentimes, I see, this is my opinion, but I think I see a lot of women that come up to the podium, they're really hesitant to give their, their full name and address. And my question is, this is great for doing this, but why is it so antiquated that we're, even though, sometimes, a lot of times, the people even write down their name and their address, and then they have to come up to the podium, and that, that's as much as a privacy issue as this would be. Why did they have to give their full name and address in front of the monitor? Why can't they sign up a sheet somewhere? Maybe it's back there and hand it, and then just say their name, and that's it. And they don't have to give their address and everything else.
Yeah. I mean, my understanding is the basis of that is again, to sort of be able to wait. So if somebody says, I don't want to give my address, we're not going to push them.
At the podium, or here, or the public's?
At the podium. If they say, no, thank you, and we've seen that happen before, maybe not with this board, but I've seen that happen for sure at the BOA, that's fine, but then you have to say in your mind, okay, are you from Timbuktu, or are you the neighbor next door? So it all comes, you know, that's a choice, and that they can weigh, but that's part of the reason that that's asked, is sort of, are you immediately impacted, or are you just sort of vaguely thinking about this and drive by once a month?
I, I mean, to be honest, I've never heard anybody ever say like, you have an option. You don't have to give your address. I've never heard that. I've never heard anybody say, I don't want your address.
We've never given, we don't give the option, but we had this discussion at length at the Board of Adjustment last year, maybe the year before, and, and agreed. Like if somebody says, I'm not sharing my address with you, then we leave it. A lot of consultants will give you their work address.
Right.
So it, it varies. What do you?
You know, for during Jerry DiTulio's mayoral terms, he was careful to say when public speakers would come up, please give your address or your city, if you'd rather. And some people would say, I'm from Westminster, and no address. And fine, you know, then they've kind of got the, there are other people that want you to know they live, you know, at 38th and, you know, DePew. I mean, they want you to know that, and that's important to them. But I, I thought that was a good pattern for, because at least on the Council, most of the time, council members wanted to know, is this a Wheat Ridge person, or is this somebody from Littleton? And, you know, that was enough for them, and that was kind of protective of the witness, too. So you can shift to that if you like.
Yeah. What's your name and tell us where you're from? Like I'd maybe give my cross streets instead of my actual number, right? We can, we can, if that's what, if there's consensus for that, we can change that, you know, next meeting, kind of a thing.
Is there consensus for that, or not really, or?
If you're the chair, you'll start doing that.
Perfect. Change your script.
Okay. And then, let's see, the, another question I have is data retention. So if, if for some reason, we decide, you know, we go down the path and we start doing this, and we decide that we don't, we don't want to do this anymore, where's that data? Is that easy to, is it just that we've uploaded documents and we still retain copies of everything?
So our uploading of staff reports will not replace where we keep our permanent city records. So we use a web link, Laserfish, you may have searched that yourself. So we, we keep a hard copy for, I forget, Tammy, period of a year, two years. And then we have digital copies that Tammy has the joy of scanning in every comment letter, every red line, every, everything, thousands of pages for every case into our permanent electronic file. So this won't be our archive. And after every case, we will export all the comments we receive into that more permanent file. So we don't have to rely on this from a longevity standpoint.
Okay. And then will there be, is there some type of, I know it's all about free speech, but is there some type of moderation, moderator that reviews some of this stuff? So that, you know, and it's hard to determine, you know, is that offensive? That somebody's putting up there, or is that, you know, too inflammatory that we really, really don't want them to be posted? It's a little, I mean, I don't know, maybe people don't say as much when they come to the public, but I feel online, it's a little bit easier.
So we asked, what's that? We asked Travis that specific question, and he said he's maybe had to moderate twice. So we'll all get dinged when a comment comes through. The case manager will take the priority in looking at those, but we'll all have access if somebody's out or sick or whatever. Because we recognize that people would expect a comment is moderated fairly quickly within a business day, so that the public can see it. He didn't have a lot of issues with that. And the, when you moderate the comment, you say, you know, your comment was rejected, it has to be one of the six reasons in the moderation policy, please resubmit. Please modify and resubmit. In my mind, again, it mimics the public hearing. When, when you get really uncomfortable with the language somebody's using, you or the chair will often say, I'm sorry, you need to watch your language, or whatever it might be, right? We don't let people get profane and crazy at the podium. So again, very similar. I don't, I don't think it would be a huge lift.
Does, and does, does Lakewood require the applicant's presentation?
No.
Okay. That's a little questions ahead. Oh, and one last one. Do, do we need to, reviewing this information now, but do we need to do like a, kind of a test project? You know? Does that make sense? Or do we just, here's the real case, and you're just going to go through it and?
We will. So we all have backend, we've been working on a demo site, so we've all played with it. We will make sure that you have a technical training and a tutorial, and we'll walk through it. I think it will be fairly intuitive. You'll log in, I don't remember if I included a decision maker view. You'll see the listing, the cases, how many read and unread cases. You don't have to click through and through and through, and it'll just, same as your Facebook feed or Nextdoor feed. You're just literally, as you're panning through, it will say that you've read it. So like, you could fall asleep at the podium and still technically have heard the comments. You can skim through the webpage, and it will mark that you've read the comment. So the, the bar is very low for commenting, the bar is very low for decision makers. We acknowledge that this is an additional task, which is why we're bringing it to you. But I, I have confidence that we can just go all in after we do a little technical training.
Okay.
The D-bag.
Yeah.
Started the D-
High dive board, yeah.
There's no way that we can, that the Commissioners can delete something?
Can't mess it up. So I should say, no, you can't delete anything accidentally. It sends automatic emails, and because we'll close it a couple of days ahead, if you're having issues, you call us and we'll walk you through, or you can come in. Lakewood did say they have a council member who comes in like six hours before their meeting and sits down with Travis, and he like logs them in for him. We will do whatever we need to sort of make this work, if that's, if that's the barrier.
Won't be true for any of you.
No, wouldn't.
We can access it on our own computer.
Phone, tablet, computer, for you or the public. Yep.
Okay. Commissioner Leo?
There have been some projects that have been real attention getters, and people get sometimes obsessed with it. Is there anything that would keep someone from just entering as a neighbor, or as someone else, and just keep putting in comments for their opinion?
That's a good question. I don't know if it limits a comment by the IP address, or by just the name field. Like Survey Monkey, for example, you can limit responses by IP address. You know, I, I, my inclination is to sort of assume best intent until we run into one of those issues, because.
We're, we're meeting with Travis tomorrow. I, I was under the impression that it does limit by IP address.
Does it by IP? Yeah, that would make sense. The only challenge to that is like, you've got a couple, you have one computer, you both want to comment, so I, we'll talk to him about that.
Or like a mobile library?
Exactly. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Or VPN.
Can you?
VPN.
Yeah.
Can, can you have a, can you have a string, can you have a conversation?
No, you can't. So that's all.
You can't reply to somebody's comment?
Correct. You can't reply, you can't like, you can't whatever. Same as a comment here is directed to you and not a conversation with the audience. It's very discreet.
Is this an app?
You know, I don't know if it's an app, or it's just mobile compatible, friendly, whatever that would be, but it's definitely, and, and the platform demo that we saw for the phone was like built for the phone. Yeah.
Can you see everyone, I mean, as Commissioners, we can see all the comments, but if I was a member of the public?
Yes.
I get to see everyone else's comments?
Yes.
Will we be able to use it as private citizens?
No, same as like you can't walk up to the podium.
For a council, or?
No, I guess, I mean, my answer is probably paraphrase of yours, of once you're on the Commission, you give up your hat as a private citizen, so.
You can't recuse yourself.
No, because the only recusals are, you know, conflicts of interest, et cetera, and.
Is the property next door?
Yes. But, you know, when you said yes to being a Commissioner, you said yes to getting more power than almost anyone else. And there's a price for that. And that price is you don't get to say, well, I, I get to be a Commissioner, and I also get to, you know, be a private citizen on this case. You're a private citizen in 99.9% of the rest of your life, but for this, you've, you've made a deal.
May I return to something? Because I'm on page three now, at the bottom. I, I really, I really like this, first of all, because I think it gives people a, a full picture of what's going on in the community. And I think it, it gives them a context for making comments, because they can see it all.
Right.
I think, I'm sincere about this, too. I think it's, I think there's a privileged position for the applicant. They don't have to make a presentation. There's a letter of intent in there, but it's, as we said before, it's buried. It seems to me that it should be upfront. This is what I'm, this is what I would like to do. This is why I would like to do it. If it's mom and pop who want to subdivide their property, we use our own judgment, and we decide whether that's a credible, competent explanation of what it is I want to do. If it's a developer who has an entire staff, I would expect something a bit more complicated, a bit more specific, a bit more detailed. So leaving everybody off the hook, sort of, I, I think it creates a privileged position. Bottom on page three, what changes for the public? The platform also provides an option for asking questions of staff, and if enabled, of the applicant. So why are they let off?
Well, we're frankly not inclined to have the public engage the applicant with questions.
Why not?
Well, because I think we, and I don't.
It doesn't mimic the hearing for as much.
It, it doesn't, and I think we'd be, we'd want to edit those. I mean, I, I don't think we'd want the applicant to be answering questions of our citizens and be confident that they were going to answer them accurately.
Can you create a way for the, for citizens to ask questions of the applicant through you?
Well, I don't think we need to. I think if, if we're not capable of answering the question from the citizen and need additional input from the applicant, we'll solicit that, that input. But I don't think we need to be a conduit for engaging that conversation between the citizen and the applicant individually. I don't know if you have other thoughts?
Yeah. So the public is not the jury for the applicant, right? You are. And that's why you guys get to pepper the applicant with questions. So if somebody chooses not to make a presentation, you can get their butt up to that podium and answer all the questions that you had hoped that they would have shared otherwise. But the public is not the jury for the application. So we are, you know, in our role as case managers, well, I think sometimes the public perceives that we're biased, because we're often making a recommendation, and it's often a recommendation of approval by the time we get someone to a hearing. We are the mediator between decision makers, public, and applicant, and sort of equilaterally in those three ways. But in the same way that you don't talk to the applicant before the public hearing, we don't want the public engaging them. We've seen examples where applicants have well intentioned, maybe gone in sort of negotiated designs that don't meet any of the zoning or subdivision criteria, you know, at kitchen tables, and that has not ended well, either from a, something we couldn't recommend approval on, or it just got, you know, it's gotten ugly in a public hearing of like, well, you said at my kitchen table, you were going to do this, and then you're, it's, it's not been clean. And in my opinion, it doesn't sort of further your ability to make a decision on their project. The goal is to have awareness and involvement, but not necessarily to have that direct dialogue.
I agree. And, and it's a free country, and if the applicant wants to reach out to the neighborhood because they want to, you know, try to blunt criticism or deal with issues before they walk in with their project, you know, it's a free country, and they're, they're welcome to do that. The one thing that, that I don't think would be appropriate for the city is to now be the facilitator for that set of conversations. And then all of a sudden, you're, you're, the, the city is a participant in one way or another, in the- And then all of a sudden, you're, you're, the, the city is a participant in one way or another in those conversations and has responsibility for them. And it will, and I, I do not recommend that.
But isn't the city already speaking for the developer in many ways?
No, no, no.
But you, you carefully craft the presentation that they bring to us?
We craft our analysis of their proposal.
No, the, the city crafts its, its staff report on the application. They don't craft the applicant's presentation. The applicant presents what they're gonna present. And one of the things you're asking for is the applicant to, you know, create a statement for the, and, and fine, and that'll either, you know, happen or won't. And I understand your reasons for asking for that. And, but, but that's very different than what the, the staff does and their task in creating, this is what this application is about. Here, it addresses this property over here, this is what it is, this is how it matches up with the code, et cetera. That's the staff's job. And that's, they're not doing that job for the applicant. I disagree with that.
But, but the, but the staff works with the applicant sometimes over months or years.
Sure, it's also their job to do that.
Okay, so who's working with the neighbors? Is there an ombuds person assigned to take the comments that the neighbors make and bring them to us?
No, that's not required by our code. It's not a feature of our code. And if the council wants to fund a new position that does that, I mean, they could, but now we're considerably afield from the Wheat Ridge Speaks, you know, tool, which is really just designed to mimic the public hearing and to, to provide outreach for more people than would otherwise be able to come.
I don't think we're far from it at all. If, if what it's supposed to do is to provide a context for people to understand things, seems that the context ought to be complete.
And you try to make it as complete as possible with a public hearing. You have contacts that people, people say to you what they, 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 what they believe is important. And they make judgments. We all make judgments, don't we? We're all subjective judgments about, here's what I think that commission ought to hear. Here's what I feel most strongly about. Uh, they come in and they do that. The tool is designed to make that easier for people to do. And frankly, they can do both. They can send in the comment on Wheat Ridge Speaks, they can come in here. Uh, they get, uh, more information early. That's all good. Uh, at some point, the, the, the task of outreach be, becomes greater than the actual hearing process itself. You know, and at some point, you've gotta kind of remember, well, what are we doing here? Are we, are we sort of not only mimicking the public hearing, but kind of replacing it with a bunch of online dialogue? And then we're, the hearing is less meaningful. You know, at some point, I think you have to draw a line, you really do. Uh, and there's, as was pointed out, a cost. And the, the more bells and whistles, the more cost. But no question that you're a recommendation to council, and I know they'll wanna hear what, what you recommend. And, and we wanna give as much time as you like to this. And, and the longer you spend on this, the less time I, uh, have to take on the training, so it's up to you.
And let me just add one more thing. So the goal of public involvement is not to design by consensus. So in a perfect world, and we're not in a perfect world, you have an entire community that participates in a comprehensive plan, an entire community that participates in a subarea plan, an entire community that speaks about legislative code amendments. And then all you're doing is making sure that these projects checked the box of the legislation and the vision and the comp plans, that the entire community has theoretically participated in. That's obviously not how it is. But by the time we get to a plat or a specific development plan, we, we should have sort of rolled in all of the comments and all the people and all of the years of people's comments, right? So, we struggle with that when even we just give comments back on an application. We're not trying to design it for them. We're, our job is to say, does this meet it? If you don't like the built environment, so think about the slot homes in Denver. If you don't like the built environment, it's not the designer's problem, it's a code problem. The code allowed that to be built, right? So if we aren't liking what we're seeing, it's not the applicant's problem or the developer's problem. The code or the vision documents are not calling for the built environment that we desire to see. So, we want people to be involved in the process, we want people to be aware of what's happening, we want them to feel some ownership over the direction that the city is going. But the time to, to design or vision by consensus is not at the land use case, it's much earlier in the process. And we are working on all of that too next year, right? The engagement tour, the forty-fourth subarea plan, our comp plan's ten years old. So we know that that is important and that maybe that's some of the tension that we're feeling, is that we have to participate and design by consensus at a land use application. But that's why it feels a little upside down at this moment.
Laboring that, I, I agree with all of that, and particularly the, the importance of being involved in comprehensive planning to influence outcomes in the future that are land use decisions, if you, as a citizen. But, one additional thing to be mindful of is, you cannot make, with rare, minor exceptions, a land use application in the city of Wheat Ridge without first doing one thing, and that's holding a neighborhood meeting. Uh, that neighborhood meeting is, is noticed to people within six hundred feet of the subject property. Staff are at those meetings, the developer kind of hosts those meetings in terms of presenting the information. And we take the comments that we hear at those meetings seriously. So they, they, you know, often inform either from a staff or from an applicant, um, perspective, legitimate comments that are made at a neighborhood meeting of what the land use, um, application is or what the land use outcome is.
So we'll take a couple more comments and we probably need to move on.
I'll just be quick. Uh, you know, I like this, this tool and the theory of the best case scenario. What I can't get in my mind is, the worst case scenario is, doesn't do what we want it to do, there's, there's no if statements, like if this, if this doesn't work or if this is not happening the way we, I'd love to know some of that. What's, what's our out? If this doesn't do what we hope that it does?
When you say, "what we want it to do," what do you mean by "what we want it to do"?
Well, we wanted to increase public interaction. But, I mean, there's other factors, I mean, when we're talking technology. And so if it doesn't do what we think we, there's no outs in, in the statements here. Like if, I mean, it's a lot of work, like, we'll point out, it's money. And i, if, if two people are the ones commenting, I mean, for months, do we, do we have an out and say, this is not?
So.
I mean, the best case scenario, we love it.
Yeah.
I wanna look at the opposite, at least consider if it doesn't do what?
So if it's not used at all, then it's, then it's a sort of cost benefit analysis. But in my mind, the, my goal is not to increase participation, but to increase opportunity for participation. We can't force people to come to a meeting that they set the time for, right? So, eh, you know, we, we struggle with this with the NRS, we're gonna struggle with this when we do the engagement tour, we're gonna struggle with it all the time, right? We can, we can modify some of our techniques to engage by going where the people go. And this is about as far as we can go, to go where the people go, by going to every device that they own to allow them the opportunity to participate. I know that I can't expect to get more people, but I want to hope that I've at least given folks the chance. And, at the end of the day, if they don't take that opportunity and we need to cut the budget somewhere, we can acknowledge that this might be the first thing to go. Um, but I've sat in enough of your meetings and enough council meetings that, you know, going as late as one AM and looked around and said, this is not representative of our community. And it makes me sad. I mean, all of us are planners, we love planners, we don't go to our planning commission meetings in the communities that we live, 'cause we just can't do that, right? And I know from talking to folks in the last year, there's people who want the opportunity to be involved and they just can't make it happen. So, I think, I think it warrants, you know, some sort of routine reporting out of, is, what is this doing? Is it being used? Is it achieving a goal of an opportunity or, or increase? Um, but my sort of naive idealistic is just, I just wanna let you know, you can if you want to, right? So. My soapbox lately. It's a monthly subscription. We can cut it off whenever we want, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And I would expect that, you know, if you really aren't getting the participation, I assume that there would be efforts made, you know? We'll start hearing things said at the dais and more outreach and kind of beat the drum, uh, around that. Uh, if, for whatever reason, it just isn't, the, the opportunity isn't, the idea that there's an opportunity, isn't reaching people, then. But in the end, if you reach everybody and they go, yeah, that's all fine, but I'm either showing up or, then you're at a monthly budget and I think council would cut it.
And I'm not asking any of you to disclose how many people come up at the rec center or the grocery store, but I have to imagine that between you and council, if you just said to every person who asked you a question, just go to WheatRidgeSpeaks.org, that we get at least a little bit of use and that that would eventually snowball.
I, I guess, I guess my concern is not so much, uh, people finding it, because I, I believe you'll probably have it, it'll be easy enough to find. And so, the con, the concern I have is not so much, will people participate? Because I, I believe they will. My concern is that this is, eh, the way it's moderated. And, given what you see on social media and how people abuse that and how, as, as Scott commented earlier, they will say things online that they would never say in person. So if there, if, if there are, um, libelous comments, if there are damaging comments, uh, that frankly have nothing to do with an application, but it's a neighbor against neighbor. I mean, I can think of all kinds of scenarios where people would put posts, publicly post comments that are, are damaging in one way or another. And, eh, eh, I'm just concerned that this would tend to poison the well. And going forward on a project, um, the, for whatever reason, it, it creates problems not just for the applicant, but for the city and possibly the commissioners.
So those comments won't be publicly visible, 'cause we won't approve them. So I pulled up Lakewood's comment policy. All comments will be moderated and will not be published on the publicly accessible website if they contain any of the following material: profanity, inflammatory and threatening or abusive languages, personal attacks, false identification of the commenter, maybe to your question, uh, language or concepts deemed to be offensive or demonstrably false, language promoting or advertising business service event, organization or political candidate or issue, and comments directed at prior commenters or the public rather than the planning commission or city council members. If your comment is not approved and not published, you will receive notification and can submit a revised comment.
So the person hits the send button on a comment?
Comes to us first.
It doesn't go, it doesn't appear immediately?
Right.
Okay, so then you review it, they ask you a question, you know, how come it's not ten feet when it's supposed to be twenty feet? And your reply then is posted as well?
No, so if they wanna ask a question, that's, that'd be separate, same as like they email us.
Well, the, the question might come at the bottom of one thousand words, you know? They'll, ninety-nine hundred word, ninety-nine words about, um, why they don't like it, and then, oh, by the way.
Sure, so same as in the public meeting, if somebody comes to the dais and asks a question, I don't answer that question right away. They have to sit, sometimes it never gets answered, but we answer questions at the end. So what we'll do is, we'll come to the meeting and say, for the public's understanding, here's all the comments that we got in advance and here's some things I should probably share, because I saw these as questions or themes, right? But if, if they wanna get an answer, they'll see they should have hit the Ask Staff tab instead.
But just one tiny little clarification. Um, so this has to be a case, right? Like, so if you guys start working on the forty-four or forty-fourth or your comp plan, it's not until it gets to a point where it's going before commissioner or council that people can comment?
Through this. So we're working on a different portal to encourage more comprehensive public engagement on, on a project during the project process.
Okay.
But this is strictly limited to mimic the public hearing for an item.
I, I mean, I kinda knew that, but I was just confirming.
Yeah. Not this, but we're working on something else, yeah.
Commissioner Boss?
One comment, I'd like to see on this portal a picture of the sign for the meeting. So many times they're on the property, you gotta get out of the car, you gotta walk over to the fence, you know, to read it. It's not large enough to read from the street. So I think if that were a picture on this, then people would know time, date, place, address, that might be further in the information, but boy, is that, uh, one, one place, one sign.
So we will probably not do the photo of the sign, but have all the exact same information very clearly legible at the, at the top. Sort of the announcement of the, which agenda item, time, date, that kind of stuff, address. And we can put like a vicinity map links into Google, links into a PDF map. So some of those things, I think, will help people identify what, what and where we're talking about.
Are we ready to move on?
Only if you are. Sure, yeah. I mean, we're going to city council on Monday, so if you guys have, wanna offer a sort of consensus to support use of Wheat Ridge Speaks or People Speak, then I would happily forward that to council. What's that? So, let me see, um, that might be a bang the table, a different platform. Yep, so TalkThornton.com is, um, a platform that is what we'll be using for all the other types of projects and processes we're doing. It's called Bang the Table, it's created by planners, it's a way to engage people, project specific. The vast majority of communities right now are heading in that direction. So, we don't have a name for it yet, but we're gonna roll that out next year too.
Are the commissioners generally in favor? Yeah? Do we need a formal motion?
No, you can just.
Uh, you can just ask if, if there's support for a consensus to recommend approval to council.
So moved. Show of hands?
Consensus. Okay, um, I'm gonna keep talking and then I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Dahl in about five more minutes. Um, so the second half of the packet, I sent a few things for reading in advance. Um, I think you all got the email. I sent out some training topics, called for some ideas, and we've consolidated those topics into three discrete conversations. Um, so what we'll do with this, which we, I don't remember how we formatted the last one, we'll stop after each topic, do question discussion, then move to the next. Um, so I'll keep going and start us off with parkland dedication. Um, this afternoon, I actually went through all the agendas that you've had this year in 2019. And so far this year, you've seen nine projects that had a requirement for parkland dedication or fee in lieu. And they were residential developments or subdivisions of varying sizes. Um, I included some of the history of sort of why our requirement is what it is now, but I'll walk through some of the backstory. Um, so, in the, in both the zoning and the building codes, chapters five and twenty-six, we have a requirement that any new residential development or subdivisions required to dedicate parkland or pay a fee in lieu. You know all this, because we share this with you at every meeting, based on the premise that more people creates more demand on parks and open space. Uh, in 2014, we overhauled the parkland dedication requirement. Um, maybe only one or two of you were here for that. It was the same time we overhauled the subdivision regs. And the excerpts I included in your packet were from that time, when we were trying to rationalize the approach that we're currently using now. The reason for that is 'cause our prior system was incredibly inconsistent. Um, inconsistent in how we assess the requirement, um, the fees were not formulaic, the fee was never actually known until the project was done, and then it was gonna kill the project, so the developer would ask for a waiver, and more often than not, they were waived. So it was not achieving the goal. Um, since 2014, it's been much more equitable and a predictable requirement, and it's a requirement that you can no longer waiver, uh, request a waiver from. So the subregs specifically say, like, an economic argument is not a reason for a waiver. Um, the requirement itself that we present to you in those nine staff reports this year is based on several formulas. The first being a ratio of parkland to people, and we use seven and a half acres per thousand people. When we did our community analysis in 2014, it ranged from like five and a half acres to twelve acres per thousand people. So we're kinda right in the middle. Um, under the old system, higher density projects were disproportionately impacted by the requirement. So, understandably, you could have more units or individuals on a smaller piece of property and we were getting numbers that like, you need to dedicate half your land. It was just, it was not, it was not making sense. So we used census data to understand household size by housing type, so senior, multifamily, single family, detached. We did a land valuation study, we had a third party do that. Um, so what we have now is a predictable per unit fee in lieu of land dedication. And those fees are on page four, and that's what we share with the applicant the first day that we meet with them to talk about a project in a pre-op meeting. Um, the vast majority of the time, you know that we require a fee in lieu of dedication, and we know that our fee is on the lower side, or at least it was in 2014. We were looking at cities like Thornton or Aurora or Vado, where they still had huge amounts of greenfield development and a huge need to build more parks, sizable parks. Wheat Ridge is fairly built out and we have, um, and we're proud to have a pretty robust parks and open space system. So our needs are a little different than other communities. We have a Parks and Recreation Master Plan that the Parks Department creates and manages with the Parks Commission. Um, when we take the fee in lieu, it's not usually so we can use that money to go buy land and build a park, it's usually so we can improve a park or build a trail. And in 2014, when we modified the code, we specifically modified the language that said how we could use those fees, so we can do parks or. how we could use those fees, so we can do parks or trails, new or improved. And the Parks Department has, you know, we do a revenue estimate of parkland dedication fees that the Parks Department immediately incorporates into their expenses to put into things like Prospect Park and other projects that they do on an annual basis. It's actually the Parks Department that makes the call on whether we want land or fee, so every time we do a referral for a residential project, we send it to them and the director confirms, looks at the master plan and confirms what they would like. The only time in recent history that we've done a land dedication was the portion of Toll Brothers requirement was a part of that publicly accessible park community. It was a small park for 200 units, but it wasn't meant to be sort of the big park serving 200 units, it's one component in the linear park infrastructure that the station area calls for. So we're building the rest of that infrastructure with 2e bonds and with park fees that are coming from some of the projects that are in that area. So that's sort of the background to why we are where we are, which I think might answer in more depth some of the questions that you guys have been asking on these projects we've gotten over the last year. What am I forgetting?
Oh, it brings back lots of memories from when we did that. It really was a mess.
Red sheets.
The way we did it before did not work well at all and was not equitable from project to project. The only thing I would add to what you just said in terms of the new framework is, the Parks Director typically takes the request to the Parks Commission as well. So another citizen appointed commission has an opportunity to opine whether they think we need land in this location or whether it's more appropriate to take a fee.
Any questions, Commissioner Boss?
So you just said that the money right away goes to Parks and Rec or Parks Department, it's not sitting in the City General Fund?
It doesn't go to the General Fund, it has a specific line item account.
And then they're the only ones that can do the expense on it?
Correct, yeah, and the code language limits what we can spend that money on, which is why it has to be in a specific account.
As well as that. Do we get to see, is there financial reports on what, how much they're taking in, where they're spending it, how much they're spending on and on what?
Probably. I don't, we do the revenue prediction and we code it properly when we get the fees. Our more common parkland dedication fee is sort of the one-off, single-family building permit, so we're collecting, you know, $2,000 or so every, I don't know, month or so, right? So it builds up very small increments until we get one big project that finally comes into permit and pays like $300,000. So they, I think, usually save it up and then will spend it. So we're saving up what we can for the TOD area, we haven't spent that yet, but I'm sure we can find that because it's a single account. So the, because the condition that you guys typically approve is prior to issuance of first permit, we have a really hard time sometimes figuring out, is it going to be this year, is it going to be next year, because these are multi-year projects? But we do make those revenue estimates every year.
But they do have a actual versus a projected?
Yep.
And is that part of the city budget, or is that something that?
It's a special revenue fund in the city budget.
And so it's not listed as park fees, it's listed as special revenue fund?
Yeah, it goes into like Parks and Open Space Special Revenue Fund.
Yeah, there's a GL code for it.
Okay.
So like, we can log it.
I just wondered where it was.
It's separate enough that we can track how much we've had and how much we've expended.
Okay.
I don't track what it gets expended on.
Right, and then when Parks makes their budget request, then they would show that as part of their ask or budget request, I assume?
It's a part of their budget assumptions, yeah. They're usually fairly disappointed when a project doesn't move forward on schedule when they're expecting quarter of a million dollars in park fees. So we've heard feedback on needing to be more conservative, but they include that as a revenue and expense in their budget.
Realized or not?
I don't know.
Oh, okay.
I pretend to know more accounting than I do. I just have to predict how many units we'll have every year so they can predict how much money they'll get from us.
All right. And then in regards to parkland dedication fee in lieu of, I know Will has talked about it a couple of times, and I'm in accordance with his ask, maybe he wants to lead that, but the traffic light situation, based on future traffic issues, lights needing to be.
We will talk about traffic impact fees in the third topic.
In the third one, okay.
The faster we wrap up parkland, the faster we get to that.
Thank you.
I just have a question about, I haven't seen the code language, so can they use that for like operations and maintenance?
No. I'll pull it up. No, it's specifically purchase, acquiring, and improving, hang on.
So improvements, mainly, we want to add a kid next door or playground, not like maintain or replace aging infrastructure or something like that?
By way of example, it could be aging infrastructure, but by way of example, we've been, Parks has been remodeling both Anderson Park, which had $4 million in 2e bond funding, they've also been working on three-phase improvements to Prospect Park. And so I know that they got some pretty good state grant funding and Jefferson County grant funding for the big first phase, but now they've been trying to complete phases two and three and the new pavilion and some other work along the creek will be completed this year, and part of that will be funded by these fees in lieu.
So the one key sentence, cash in lieu payments shall be paid to the city and deposited in the city account to be used solely for the acquisition, development, or improvement of parks, open space, bicycle and pedestrian trails, and related facilities. Didn't use to include trails or improvements, which was a big flaw, because that's sort of our primary infrastructure needs right now.
It says the formula falls on the lighter side of the spectrum. How do we, how do we go about raising this fee a little bit? It seems just so low, and I'm sure we can find lots of things to do with the money. I mean, let's build some trails, let's build a bicycle highway, I don't know.
So it's, I mean.
Let's raise the fee.
We haven't done a fee analysis in five years, so we can, maybe that's warranted. But at the time, the comparative communities had a higher fee because they had a higher need to make really big capital investments in their Parks Department. So the Parks Department will always need and want more funds, but as we'll talk about with exactions, we're trying to sort of understand what is an appropriate exaction for the impact that we expect with the infrastructure and open space that we have. I think a lot of the fees were being requested to be waived because it would be helpful if they had known them on the front end, but they were, you know, we don't want to lose a good project because a half million dollars in park fees kills the pro forma. So we're not trying to figure out the fee based on whether the project will work, but we don't need to have the highest fee in the metro area because of what our infrastructure needs are from an open space standpoint, based on what our current master plan says. That may be a good nexus, if we update the Parks and Master Plan and it says we need all these things and we're having all these issues caused by new development, then new development can solve that problem. But to require new development to bear the burden of the city's entire open space system needing upgrades is not appropriate.
Okay, so we need to update the open space or the Parks Master Plan for the city?
I don't think that we need to.
Or if we do.
It's not calling for new stuff, but if we had, if, you know, TOD area, we know we need Parks infrastructure if we're going to turn it into a neighborhood, it calls for that. We've decided that the infrastructure appropriate in that area is not a Discovery Park, it's a linear park with sort of multimodal recreational facilities, which is why we're getting smaller chunks from different people. If we were to annex some, you know, if Clear Creek Crossing was going to be all single-family residential, we'd have a land dedication, so the, I just, we may, it may be worth looking at our fees, we routinely, usually every other year, like check our application fees, for example, like are they on par? But I don't think just because it's less than other communities means it's wrong because our needs are different than others.
We don't have as much green, developable space as our Vada, so, okay.
It's a balancing act. I've seen municipality that has an extremely low growth rate, and so they, the real estate is extremely, I won't say, but it's extremely pricey, so the way the city tried to solve the problem is that they tack on all these fees to the developer and say, okay, we want you also provide some low-income housing, so, or you can pay a fee. So the developer says, well, I have these, you know, half a million condos or whatever apartments, so I'll just pay the fee. So then the price goes even higher for the units, you know what I'm saying? So it's a balancing act, so, yeah, it's, I think between staff and city council, and I think you got some good points, but it's tough to try to find that right balance. Are there any other questions for that one?
Then I will happily hand it over to Mr. Dahl.
You've been on the hot seat, and you know, I made a rash prediction earlier to Melissa, I said, well, 8:30, so we got 10 minutes? I think, I think we're going to get.
8:30, we end or 8:30 you start?
We end.
You're spot on.
No, no. Well, we'll have as much fun as we're allowed to and as you're up for, how's that? I've got these last two top public hearing procedures, proceedings, Roberts Rules, and then Exactions Impact Fees, which we just touched on, but we'll return to it, and I've got a little chart I made just while I was sitting here. You have the sort of training materials I put together and that I've used many years for the city, and most recently in April of this year, but I'm not going to take that from the top. Instead, I'll just kind of pick little things out of it, but what I did want to do is just make a kind of a quick comment about Roberts Rules. I believe that Roberts Rules should be a tool and not a trap. And you, we've all been, haven't we, in meetings where one member or another uses Roberts Rules really as the effect of that person's use, and I'm not thinking of anyone in particular and anyone here. I've gone to a lot of meetings, I go to two a week every 50 weeks a year, and I've been doing it for decades, and so just do the math, you know, so I have very strong opinions, frankly, about what makes a good hearing and good public meeting and how you service the main goal, which is that the people that came feel that they were heard and that the decision makers heard and understood them. Not that they always win, people in America understand that you're not going to win all the time. They're sort of okay with that, they are really upset if they feel that they came and they were not heard, they didn't have an opportunity to be fully heard and you weren't really listening. That's just huge. If you do that and nothing else, I think you have served the public and you've done the best that you possibly can with the public trust that you were given when you were appointed, and you said yes. And if you do nothing else, I'm delighted with that. And so Roberts Rules can either help you do that, or they can be kind of a stumbling block, and a lot of objections, point of order, what about this, does this motion fall, and is this motion better than that motion? We're informal here, it's a small group, this isn't the US Senate. What happens to, look what happens when you use too many rules, huh, you get nothing done. So the only point I guess I'd make, and I'm happy to, so we can talk about individual Roberts Rules-y kinds of things, but you know, the main thrust, and you see the quote from Mr. Robert himself, or Colonel Robert, actually, that says, you know, "We want to make sure that a strict enforcement of rules, instead of assisting," he said, "would greatly hinder business." The very point I'm making. So just sort of think about that, if there are specific Roberts Rules questions that we go through, hit me with them, but that's my view on that. You know, you want to service the public, and you don't service the public much if there's a lot of debate up here at the dais that just burns up time over whose motion's more important and what happens here and there. Meanwhile, you're sitting in the audience going, okay, when are they going to like listen to us? And I'm really, as you can tell, I really feel strongly about that, I personally feel strongly about that. But let's talk about the right to an impartial decision maker, because that's, sure, yeah.
We put that in there, just hit the reset button, I think a lot of people were feeling a little angsty, like with the Riverside project, of what did we do wrong, why did that feel so weird, did we follow the right rule? What we did was fine, right? We were trying to make a good, clear process, and what we wanted you to get out of this and what we sort of talked about internally is we're going to relieve from ourselves the pressure of making sure we did it exactly right. And that was a bylaw thing, our bylaws are written weird, it wasn't a Roberts Rules thing, right? But our goal is to make as clear a record in good decision-making as possible, so don't worry, you did the best you could in the moment that you were in with the information that you had and the rules that were in front of us, but we're going to do the best we can moving forward. I'm not ever going to be a Roberts Rules expert, so, nor should any of us be, nor does Mr. Dahl profess to be, right? So.
Don't want to be.
Yeah.
One thing we will do pertinent to what Lauren just said is, and I've been recently using it elsewhere, and it's really helped for expectations not only of the commissioners, but of the public, when is it that I get to talk? Often, you know, the chair will say that at the beginning, but you know, people, you know, don't necessarily hear that, and we all kind of understand what comes first, who is the staff, then the applicant, and then, you know, you've been through it enough that you know what comes next, and you know there's a time for that. But if you, this their first time here as a citizen, you don't know that, maybe you're told at the beginning of the hearing, but there's a lot of stuff going on, it didn't stick. And what I've been using lately, and I'm talking with the staff about doing, is having more detailed sort of order of proceedings for hearings where the public's going to be participating, and having copies of that. It's like going to church and you get the program, and you know when the hymn is going to be, and you're ready for that, and you've got your little markers in the five hymns and you're going, it's time for the next hymn, you've got it there. I think that's the same, you know, that from my old Lutheran upbringing, I think that that's, you know, and so we're going to try to do that, and I bet you it's going to help, and I would very much appreciate your feedback on that, because I think it will address some of the issues that you had at that hearing. But let's talk about quasi judicial actions, right to an impartial decision maker, I'm on page two of that little outline I put out, and you all have seen the sort of the beginning sections, and what you do generally on-site specific projects is quasi judicial, you know, you sit as judges, and you've heard that speech from me before, and there are certain rights and protections, and one of those is protection from no ex parte contacts allowed, that's contacts with the applicant, the opponents, the public, everyone other than staff or me outside of the public hearing, which is so hard in a small community, and it will always be hard, sorry, it will always be hard, and all I can do is give you tricks around that, and I always do, and one of those is when you're trapped in the visual aisle, you know, you say, gee, you know, it's quasi judicial, I can't talk to you, please come to the hearing. For a lot of people, that just doesn't work because they're booked on Thursday night and they want to talk to you now, so they don't have to come, and so you appeal their self-interest and say, you know, if I listen to you, then I'll have to step down at the hearing. That appeals to self-interest because they're talking to you so they can influence you, right? That's a trick. Use any of these that you like. Door number three is, you know, email it in. Use Wheat Ridge Speaks, that's another tool for you. And door number four or five is, you know, I think I hear my wife calling me from the bakery and I'm sorry that I have to go. Another door, and I'm not kidding about that, it's whatever it takes so that you're not in the position of having had a long conversation, then at the dais, you're going to have to repeat and explain. You don't want to have to go through that. If it happens, you know, we'll do it, and I've done it and done a Q and A on that before, but I'd rather not. The other thing to do, I think, is to indicate that, or lay it on me and say, I don't fully understand it, but the city attorney says I can't, kind of like your mother, yes, your mother, kind of thing. And I joke about it, but I, use me as your tool, if that is, I'm all about results, and the result here is that the ex parte conversation doesn't happen and the testimony comes here. So whatever the best way that, you know, and you'll apply different tools to different people as they approach you, based upon your judgment of what works best. So that's this whole thing, but I want to get to the right to an impartial decision maker. And as I said, like judges, you decide it on the evidence, and it's so important, I believe, and it gets back to what I said earlier about people feeling that they were heard, that you don't signal how or you're coming down on a case before it's time for the deliberation and action on the case. I think that's huge. And, you know, Vivian is, was great for years about coming to meetings, and I sit in most of the cities I represent, I represent for different cities, and in most of those, we don't have fancy staff tables, and so I'm out in the audience, you know, with everybody else, and the perspective is really different sitting here instead of up there. And I've learned a number of things sitting in the audience. One of those is that they're watching you, they can tell when you got the eye roll, you know, they can tell when you're looking on your phone and texting instead of listening to the. the, and I'm not accusing any of you of this, I'm saying I've sat in the, and that's why I mentioned Vivian. I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but she was great about, you know, the watching, and I'll bet anything that, you know, there were times she could tell, oh, yeah, that one's a no vote and we're one-third of the way into the hearing. We've not even heard from the public yet. That person's a no vote or a yes vote, I don't care what vote they are. They've made up their mind. If you're, if you came here as a citizen, and this is the only time that you're going to be in this room, and that's often true. We often see people we've never seen before. I'm glad they come. It's the only time you're going to come here and you observe a couple of things. One is that Scott here has clearly made up his mind because of a question he asked of the applicant. We didn't, we haven't gotten to public testimony yet. He throws a softball at the applicant, you go, okay. Or he throws the other kind of ball at the applicant. Either way, he's made up his mind and he hasn't heard from me yet. I came, I created a script, and I practiced last night in front of the bathroom, you know, mirror because I, and there are people that get really nervous. This is a big deal to them. It's not as big deal to you. You've been here, you've been to all these hearings. It's not, but it's huge to them. And it's enormously disrespectful, I think, on two levels, to not give them the benefit of your full attention and your unbiased view. I live in the real world, of course, and I realize you've read the PAC, you've read all the Wheat Ridge Speaks stuff, and you form some opinions. I'm not sitting here so naive that I don't think you have. But it's important that as judges, you say, okay, I've got those opinions, but they're not going to show. And, you know, oddly enough, there are times, aren't there, when you walk in and it comes out different? You feel differently, don't you, at the end of the hearing than you did after you'd done the research? Hands up everybody that that's never happened to. No hands up. So that should tell us something. And, you know, make virtue of necessity. The necessity is that as judges, you remain as unbiased as possible and you exude that image to people. So what are some of the ways we signal our prejudgment? Questions, that's, you know, easy. Just, you want to nail that guy because you read the thing and you want to nail that applicant. That's fine, but in nailing the applicant, you feel good about nailing him with the question. You've just said how you're going to vote on this case and you haven't heard from the public yet. That's wrong. And while it makes you feel good to nail the applicant, I am asking you to rise above that and not do that. And you ask the question, but ask it in a way, and you're all clever enough, because come on, you've all sat through these hearings, we know how to script things. Ask it in a way that gets you the information and maybe delivers information you like the other commissioners to hear. I want Scott to know that there's this. That's cool, you know, sometimes you do that and I'm all right with that. But again, pretend you're out in the audience. Pretend you're Vivian back in the day and, thanks Vivian for letting me use you. But she was a really good, you know, participant observer, and so she got the opportunity that I have every meeting, almost in every city I'm in, where I'm out in the audience and I really see how it plays. And it's so different than when you're up there. That leads me to a point that isn't right in front of us, but that's really losing eye contact. For a number of years, I was the lobbyist attorney for the Carney Municipal League, and so I spent six years lobbying at the municipal league and going to the legislature. And there are committees, of course, and I go to committee hearings. And I understood it when, as the CML lobbyist, the legislators around the table, no bigger than this, usually smaller, would read the paper while they were hearing testimony. How offensive is that? Can you imagine? I understood it as a lobbyist. I didn't mind as much because they knew my story. But when citizens would come in from Akron and their representative, or any representative, would be reading the paper while they're taking the three minutes that it took them three hours to drive in and deliver and drive back out, that's, that really struck me. And as you can tell, I still am really, it upsets me now to think about that. So just bear that in mind as you're up on the dais. So refrain from signaling your opinion. Obviously, you know, you can't talk to people outside of the hearing room. And contacting adjacent property owners, I'm over on page three, in advance, you certainly can do a drive-by because that's so huge, you know? It's like no substitute. Oh, the topography really does fall off. The grade is really, it's hard to see that from any of the documents. Man, every time I've driven by, and I'm fine with that, that's a form of ex parte contact, I suppose, where you're not contacting anyone. You're doing a drive-by and you know that those trees are that close to the property line, or they're not. Or when someone says, I'm going to do buffering, you get there and you go, yeah, that's going to help because there's like no room. That's really helpful and I'm perfectly fine with that. But as you see, I'm pretty intense about the conducting yourself appropriately. Here's why. Here's why you don't have to signal your intention. You own the gun with the bullets in it. At the end, you're the ones that get to vote. You don't need to signal, you don't need to win early, you know? You're going to vote at the end, so hold, you know, keep your powder dry, you know? It's not like if I don't say here I feel now, I won't have a chance. You're the ones in charge. You're the last word always. So, you know, bear that in mind, and I think the public will appreciate it because it's just being fair. Bringing us to public hearings. Some of the things in, the goal is, as I mentioned earlier, that everybody, the attendees leave the hearing feeling was fair and their views were heard and appreciated, not necessarily followed because they know in their hearts they can't always get that, but heard. Just, it's so important to hear people. And as I've gotten older, I feel more strongly about that. And that brings me to one of the points under D2. You know, we're going to announce the rules at the beginning, we're going to have kind of a handout. We think we're working on that, that will help people, you know, the church program handout, I think that'll really help. We always suggest people don't repeat testimony. And how many times do people say, and occasionally you hear it, I agree with the previous speaker? That's nice, but this person, I used to be more impatient about this and I'm not anymore, and here's why. A person will come and they know the previous speaker said exactly what their points, but they want you to see them. They're not her, they're me, and I want you to hear it also from me. And to many people, that has independent value and independent importance that just because it's exactly the same words, I don't care. I want you to hear it from me. And that means you've got to ask them not to repeat, but be prepared for them to do it and be prepared to accept that with really good humor. And engage with them and give them eye contact, and it's a very little thing for you to do for them that will have a huge impact. And you really, you really should. I agree with the public testimony being directed to the commission. Otherwise, we get into this Q and A, and very often people will say, in all innocence, I've got a question for the applicant. How many units is this, or how close to the road is this, or what are you going to do? And I've seen good chairs, and I know Scott's a good chair, say, you'll need to address the commission and we'll note that question down and we'll address it later. That's better than saying, I'm sorry, no questions for the applicant. You're the speaker and you go, well, now what? They need to be told, we're going to get that answered, but it's not going to be answered right now because we don't want to get this back and forth dialogue with the applicant. That's not appropriate. But they do need to hear that it'll be dealt with. And so the chair is good about saying, you need to address the commission and I'm going to ask staff to note that down and we'll address it after, when the public testimony's complete. I feel as a speaker that I've been honored there. You know, I have not been blown off, and that's important. I've said, give the speakers your full attention. Just remember that person from Akron and the legislator at the state capitol reading the newspaper. If you just remember that mental image, you'll know what to do. So that's what I can tell you about that. But testimony is admissible, almost anything, including hearsay. Well, I heard someone say this, or 20 people have told me this. You're the judges here and you have the ability and the smarts and the savvy to go, okay, I think maybe it was more like 10 people. And to judge the credibility of the evidence. It's not so technical that it's a trial. And hearsay, meaning something, someone telling you something that they, that someone else told them and that someone else is not here. That's fine. It wouldn't be okay in a trial, that's hearsay. But you get to weigh that evidence, you know? And it's all about how much weight you give to it. And I think you mentioned earlier about when you hear, when you get, you know, 50 comments written in, you have the ability to, you know this community, you're from here, and so you have the ability to kind of say, those are, that is a lot of comments and I can tell that is actually representative of a lot of people. Or I can tell that's not representative of a lot of people. I trust you on that because you know your community and you're allowed to make those kind of subjective decisions. So let's see. What we want to skip to, I think, is the next one, taking action. And then we'll talk a little bit about conditions and exactions, but we'll stop before then to take questions. On taking action, and I think this was kind of a minefield from that last hearing a little bit about, okay, how does this happen? I've said, of course, draw your conclusions from the evidence and the record made during the hearing. That includes the staff report, decisions based upon whether the application meets the requirements in the code of laws. Not the requirements as you would like them to read, but the requirements in the code of laws. If you like them to read differently, if you think there ought to be a requirement that they do additional things or other things happen, that's got to get into the code. The way it gets into the code is a code amendment, not, okay, I'm going to lay that condition unsupported by the code on this application. And maybe it should be in there, it should be, but until it's in the code, it isn't something you can apply. It just, it is not fair because I'm the applicant and I read the code, I complied. And now you're saying, no, not because of the code requirements, but because of requirement that while it makes all sorts of sense, is not a requirement yet because it's not in the book. So it's got to, you know, it's got to be in the book. And that brings me to this E1D, I guess, which is, it's the applicant that's in charge of their application. Sometimes, I'm not quite sure it happened in that application, but sometimes there's a tendency to, or a desire to kind of rework the application a little bit from the dais, you know? They're the captain of their ship. They sink or swim based upon the ship they brought to you. And it might be better if it were designed differently, or that density was moved to the southeast corner or that whatever, but that's not what they applied for. So they get you to say yes or no based upon what they applied for. Not, okay, I'm going to say yes, but you need to move this over here and that over there. That's you being the applicant and you're not. You say yes or no based upon what came in the door because, you know, they're grown ups and they get to decide that's the horse they rode in on. And, you know, if you don't like it and there's reasons to say no under the code, then you do that. In terms of about taking action, there's always, of course, recommended motions in the report. And the recommended motion usually will have grounds. The reverse motion often doesn't, but leaves room for you to say, I recommend denial or approval, whatever, for the following reasons. They need to be based on the evidence in the code as the example ones are. And so if you're going to do a motion that is in addition to or sort of different than what's recommended, you have the right to do that and you should because you're, we can only suggest motions, you're the ones that make them. But during the hearing, be prepared for that. Tom Abbott, anybody remember Tom, anybody remember Tom Abbott? Tom Abbott on the Board of Adjustment was great because, still is. Okay, good, he's still there. You could see him during a hearing, he'd be making notes. And at the end of the hearing, everyone would turn to Tom because they knew he was going to make the motion, pro or con, he was going to make the motion. He'd say, I move, we approve or deny the whatever for the following reasons. And then he had been listening to the evidence and he had his little bullet point list of five things that he rattled off, and that was a nice, tight motion. And it was based on the stuff he heard. You're sitting there anyhow, you got time, make notes. And those notes can form the basis of your motion to approve or deny if, or they can augment a motion that was suggested to you by staff, or they can fill in those blanks if you're going the other direction. Perfectly fine, but, you know, that's part of doing your job, I think. But let's talk about amendments too, because those come up quite a bit. And the best thing I can say around amendments is rarely you can get amendment, a series of things you want to do or conditions or whatever that you want to add on top of the main motion. I have found, and I always recommend to the counsel when they ask me, that get the main motion made, and if people say, well, I want to, I've got, there's two different or three different amendments that we want to try and two of you, two of you have a different idea. Well, how do you wrap that all into one motion so we see if it goes up or down? Awkward, isn't it? Almost impossible to do because of what are we voting on and who's going to make that motion? And that's for all the marbles, and so I'm not quite sure how I'm going to vote on it. Here's what you do. It's the Christmas tree effect, which is that the, you make the main motion, I move to approve, and the chair says, I'm going to take the main motion, but then I'm going to take motions to amend. So everyone knows that the main motion isn't just going to get voted on and we're done. You know, the chairs, but the chair's got to signal that to you so that you know you're not at risk for having the main motion made and seconded. And the chair immediately says, okay, are there any amendments? Then you start hanging the ornaments on and you can take them one at a time and say, I move to amend the main motion by adding this or doing whatever. And you can vote that one up or down. And so the ornament either does or doesn't get hung on the tree. But the ones that get hung on had a majority, didn't they? Because they passed. So they get added, and when you're done with all the amendments, then the motion is, okay, we're going to vote on them. Any other amendments? Okay, fine. The motion is amended with all these little votes have been taken, is this. And then you're done. And that's a way to kind of navigate through a series of conditions you're not sure on. On this one, you think you got four votes over here, and on that one, you think you got five votes over there that kind of overlap with the four votes. You see how you can avoid the complication by dealing with them separately. It's always fair to ask, you know, to amend the main motion. But that's something that you can certainly, when you get into action mode, signal to the chair. Chair, I'm maybe okay with the project here, but I'll have an amendment on this topic. You see council members do that. They kind of signal that to each other when they get into discussion mode. They don't signal it early because remember, we're not signaling how we feel until the testimony's over with. But when it's time for discussion, absolutely. Janice Hoppe is pretty good at that. She'll say, okay, I want you to know I'm going to, and Zach Urban's good at it too. I'm going to be in favor of this, but I'm going to have a, I'm going to want the opportunity to have an amendment. And this is what the amendment is and the appropriate time I'm going to make it. Pretty cool because then everyone knows, okay, that's, and they can start thinking about whether they want to support that amendment. And that's all good dynamics that I encourage. So those are other ways to do it. Almost done with this half. Stick the request before you. I think that's important. You should apply the same standards of relevance to your own comments and your decision as you expect out of the public would like out of the public. So if this is a rezoning application, or excuse me, if this is a subdivision application, you'll get public testimony about this is an inappropriate use of this property for resident, there shouldn't be residential here, it should be a park, or there shouldn't be multifamily here. It's zoned for multifamily. The application in front of you is site plan or subdivision for that. The decision on the base zoning was already granted, right? What we're doing now is deciding on a subdivision application. And while you'll get testimony about whether, you know, residential's just not right here. That decision got made by some predecessor to you and city council whenever it got made. And if we're going to turn this into something other than residential, that's a zoning decision, it's not a subdivision decision. The subdivision application is in front of you, that's what you vote on. And you vote on it under the subdivision standards, not on whether it would be a good use for the property. And I see that a lot, and I see that a lot here, and I understand why. This is mostly an infill community. You've got parcels of property that are already zoned for certain things that now the time has passed and development's built up around it and people don't like that it's zoned for that. And I get that. But that zoning is in place and your job is the subdivision if that's the case. If it's zoning, great, but if you're voting just on pure zoning, we don't often see those, but when we do, you're not designing the site plan, right? Then you're on the other end of that scale. And so do the job that is given you to do. There are other jobs, but if they're not what's the application, then they're not in front of you. And that's kind of all of the stuff under three. The applicant's in charge of the application, you know? If they, you think they screwed up and they really should have designed it differently, If, if they, you think they screwed up and they really should have designed it differently, well, then you might say no to the application, but you know, not trying to fix it on the, on the, on the dais. Inappropriate gra, appropriate grounds for denial, anything in the, in the applicable portions of the code. Inappropriate grounds? Failure not to volunteer a condition which you couldn't independently impose? Belief that it's the wrong use or density when the zoning allows it? Then we're over to failed motions. A failed motion, I think, did we have a failed motion in that other case? I think we did. Failed motion means no recommendation at all. The BOA where it's a failed motion, you know, then there's an automatic result. Here, if a motion fails, somebody that's keeping track, that was on the prevailing side, should make, should make the other motion. And with any luck, that'll pass because if, if a motion failed five-three, and you're, you're one of the five that voted against, you know, do the, do the reverse. And, and then you at least get a recommendation up to council. Before we get to exactions and conditions, questions on process. Because it's always, you, you know, you have to navigate each one, don't you, kind of each night? It's always a little different. I mean, I can give you these rules and then by God you're, the very next hearing you walk into, there'll be some wrinkle that, that, you know, now what? But questions that.
To fulfill motions, you need to list reasons, correct?
If, if a motion fails?
If a motion fails.
Then the commission hasn't acted yet.
Right, and then you propose.
Another motion.
A motion for denial, you need to list reasons.
Yeah, yeah, you need to, because just a pure, and if it's a recommendation to council, just a pure denial, while that tells the council something, this is your opportunity to tell them more. And if the denial is going to pass, because it is now, the, the approval failed, so somebody is right on the, on the button, you know, Richard says, okay, I'm going to now move to deny for the following reasons. Dynamite. Now you've used the megaphone that you're given to tell the council more than that. I mean, you could just do a motion denial, I suppose. But now's your chance. If, if, if there are that many, if there's a majority that wants to say no, I assume you've got reasons. Say them, you know? Put them in the motion, and you're off to the races.
If we're not sure, should we say that we want to have you write them up in more detail?
Yeah, occasionally that has happened, and I've been happy to do that for the planning commission, board of adjustment, council, where you believe, usually it's where we think there might be litigation, especially around a approval or a denial. It depends upon how controversial it is. And it's perfectly fair to say, I, I move to, to deny and further to instruct the city attorney to prepare findings for our review and action at the next meeting. If there's time in the schedule, and sometimes there isn't.
Yeah, and, and the challenge there is just sometimes if you've had a discussion and it seems like the discussion is going to be approval, and then that fails, and then the direction is to make findings, and it's really hard to make findings because there wasn't any discussion. We've, we had that happen, I think, SDP bungle. Yeah, and so if, that's fine to direct the, the city attorney, but it'd be, it's, it's really hard to do if the, if the discussion has not been robust enough to give us any obvious reasons. And that has happened at least once that I can think of.
Because to do that, I've done it a number of times, I forget when the last time I did, I think it was, it was a planning commission hearing, I think.
It was a, it was a indoor storage development plan.
Yeah, and so I sat right there and I listened to that whole tape and made notes. I tried to do the Tom Abbott scene, you know, I made notes, but, but it was, they were a little sparse, you know? It helps me if, if, even if you're going to direct me to write findings, say, articulate some things, and then I can flesh them out, you know, that would be great. Now, if you don't, you know, my job is to make a fire with whatever firewood, you know, was available in that hearing, and I'll do my best, but I'd appreciate more firewood if you get it.
And I think the fact pattern there was, was such that the, the reason that the, the commission was recommending denial of the SDP was really that you didn't like the ODP. And so that's an example of, in, in terms of what uses were permitted, what heights were allowed, et cetera. So I think that's a good example of knowing what application is and isn't before you. And if that ship has sailed in terms of the, the ODP that approved the uses or the densities or the building heights has sailed, that you really have to deal with that. And if you really do want to deny the SDP, make it speci, something specific to.
Feel free to say no.
To the SDP, not the ODP.
Yeah.
We often talk about amending motions by amending the conditions, but you can also amend a motion by amending the reasons or often adding the reasons. That happens a lot at the Board of Adjustment where we'll have three reasons. Usually Mr. Abbott will have two, three, four reasons, and somebody else will add a couple more. So that's, that's equal opportunity to amend reasons as motion, or conditions.
More questions on procedure, yeah?
Section E, number one, C, that you've covered.
E1, E1C.
Must be based on whether or not the application complies with the Code of Laws. In my mind, I think then, why do we have a public comment? If I'm just going to review and make sure it connects, how do I square that? Because if it fits, then what, what does it matter what the public says? Even if they didn't like it, because I don't, it doesn't, it couldn't, it shouldn't affect my vote. Is that how I'm supposed to read this?
Not entirely, no. The Code of Laws does have subjectivity in it. The standards for approval, the, the more down to the ground you get in terms of subdivision versus, you know, rezoning is pretty subjective in a sense, you know? But when you go to the code, it has room for debate in it on the various conditions. And I think as a commissioner, what you do is you, you take public comment and you see if, if that sways you on the standards for approval or denial, or the, the standards that, that, the code says apply here. Sometimes you get public testimony that, that's, doesn't like the zoning and this is subdivision. And, you know, you, there's not much you can do with that because that would be an inappropriate basis. But if it is a subdivision, that, there's enough, I believe, there's enough subjectivity in the standards for any of our applications that there's room for you to, to, to find support in public testimony for, for at least some of the public testimony. And I, I think you have to just be, you have to listen carefully, and you've got the, you've got the standards for approval under your one elbow, and you're hearing people, and you're going, okay, where does, does that fit here? That really presupposes kind of an active role for you thinking wise up there as opposed to just kind of taking yes, no votes. I like it, I don't like it, and well, how do I apply that here? If Dahl says I've got it, it has to be based on the code. It's harder work, no question, to say, okay, the staff report has these five standards. I'm going to listen in the testimony for how they relate to these five standards and start linking them up. That's hard work, but I believe it is the work that you're appointed to do. So, and very often, the public comments that you get won't be that detailed, but sometimes they are. And I think you just have to kind of, in a sense, give the public the benefit of the doubt. Okay, they're saying they, they hate it, but I'm sensing that, that this is what bothers them, and you know, that is a standard. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna note that. I'm gonna, that has given me some doubt about, to be blunt, the staff's recommendation on that point. And what you've then done is taken the public testimony and applied it to the standards. And that, I get it that that's hard work because the public doesn't create their testimony as if it's a staff report, you know? They don't, but that's, that's the job you get. Really good question, though, and I understand why you, why you ask it. If it's as simple as you say in E1C, then why? And to me, that is why. And the more meetings I go to, the more, and the harder I listen to people as opposed to, oh, that person's opposed, okay, turning off the ear. Oh, that person's supporting, turning off the ear. That, you know, we all do that, we're all guilty of that, I'm absolutely, I'm guilty of that. You know, I, I force myself to listen, and sometimes I'm surprised because I thought I knew what they were going to say. So I'm going to stop listening, but then I force myself, like, oh, really? It's, it's humbling, frankly, to force yourself each and every time to really listen and care what they're going to say, even if you don't like them, you've decided, you know, it's hard.
I, I have a, I have a good example. The building to the north of us, that big building, I don't know what the name of it now, it's changed.
That's right.
Yeah, yeah, that one up there, so when that was coming through.
MCBN.
Yeah, the.
Whatever they are now.
Yeah, so the city staff wanted to have a road connecting from, I don't know, whatever the street is off of Wadsworth to the east and have it connect to Kipling. And the residents were very adamant about, we do not want that to happen because when Wadsworth backs up, people, we have a nice quiet little neighborhood. And, and, yeah, people are going to cut through, and so they, they were very vocal about it. And, and then the, the planning commission then made the recommendation that to not have that street cut through from Kipling. It didn't affect the project, it still had the, met the fire code, met the entrances. But we, we made a recommendation to not have that street go through from Kipling through that neighborhood, and it doesn't. So it was because, because the people, the residents spoke. Otherwise, if no one had showed up and said anything, it probably would have went through.
That's a good example.
The two thing, yeah, the two things I might add. So we get the question, why are you always recommending support? Because we say no 90% of the time to the things that you don't ever see. And it gets really ugly when you bring a case forward or takes too much time or money. No one's going to spend a half million dollars on a development that we've told them for 12 months we're not going to support. So we have, we don't like to bring things to you that don't meet the code, so it's often going to. But we actually labored over one sentence specifically in the SDP staff report for the multifamily project at Clear Creek Crossing, because we were like, we're about to bring you guys a bunch of specific development plans. They all meet the requirements, we've read this 100-page design pattern book Stephanie has. We don't want you to feel like you're rubber stamping this next series of major projects in a major development, right? And so we, it's one sentence buried in probably 50 pages of things. The intent of the public hearing is to allow a publicly appointed body and the public at large to verify the project meets the intent of the underlying zoning. So while we are often trying to give you as much information and maybe sort of lead everyone to what we think is the conclusion, there's so much value in this not being a black box. And we get, we do have a lot of things that are administratively approvable, and, and we get grief for that sometimes. And it's probably, you know, it's, I think it's appropriate that some things are administratively approved. But there is value in, in the public process because of the process and not just the outcome.
Want to do exactions and conditions and, amen?
Just one question. So the Code of Laws is chapter 26.
Yep.
And so our homework would be to apply the case to that specific law, Code of Laws, chapter 26. However, we figure which one matches the one that we're listening to. That would be our way to help to understand that it is strictly meeting the codes or there's a little wiggle room in some way, somehow. So how many pages is that?
It's the, it's the largest chapter in the book.
So your job is not to do the word by word analysis. That's what we get paid to do, right? And so that's why we often have code citations, so if you want to, and I'm adamant about this, and I redline everybody's stuff, like per section such and such, not just it meets the design, right? So if you want to go there, you can go look, but, you know, it takes us 15 days to do an analysis of a site plan set because it's a lot of codes in some cases. So you can do that, but that's, we're the technical, we are your technical staff, we are your staff. So, you know, a Supreme Court justice has clerks because they're not doing and reading everything. I'm, I'm listening to her biography right now on top of mine. We are doing that hard work for you and you're to verify it. So you can question, like, so when I looked at that code section, I thought it said such and such, and we can explain sort of how we interpret it. We, you know, we meet every week to make sure we're being consistent because there's a lot of ways to misinterpret some of those code sections. But it's, it's not like reading.
And it's not just the code.
And it's, there you go.
The code has, and it's slightly more than chapter 26, just to the extent that there's, there's the chapter on streets, there's a chapter that deals with stormwater detention.
Design.
Right, and those all have supplemental manuals. We have, we rely heavily on a document called the Architectural and Site Design Manual, which is referenced in chapter 26, but it's a standalone document that's 30-ish pages. There's a cross-reference to the Streetscape Design Manual, that's a document that's what, 50, 60 pages, something like that. There's a.
Enough.
In the case, yeah, in the case of the, of the Clear Creek Crossing project that's been discussed, I mean, the, the design pattern book alone is what, 130 or something like that?
What I would do for a few questions, staff report will usually give you the citations. You know, it'll say, okay, this is governed by the standards for rezoning founded code section Yakitiak, which are as follows, and it'll usually repeat them. And that can target you right in on that code section. So you can see the, kind of the context of that code section, and that's a lot easier than trying to read it like a novel. You know, I have never read it as a novel. Sometimes in a really boring council meeting, you'll see me opening up the book. That's what I'm really doing, I'm saying, okay, I'm going to read the sign code tonight, why not? But, you know, that just evidences I don't have a life, you know, so, yes, ma'am?
If the commission gets off track, and sometimes we do when we get involved in a project, who or what way can we get it back on track?
The chair to begin with, is, that's the main job of the chair. And, you know, I want to emphasize that he's got the power to do that to you. So I would emphasize, I would urge that he does sometimes. The chair is the, there's two or three ways to do that. I prefer it being the chair. You'll see in council meetings, the mayor's pretty good about, you know, he, about that. I've had a lot of mayors in the time I've been here, and some have been better and some, but, but he's pretty good. Jerry DiGiulio was pretty good. He was very good at directing traffic. He was the air traffic controller. Did you notice that? You're not worried about the plane that has just landed, you're worried about the one that's coming in. And when the plane's, thank you very much, next speaker is who, you know, I mean, directing traffic. But when there are, when you're off the topic, it's first the chair's job to say, commission, our job here is this, is this area over here, we have gone to over here. Respectfully, while I appreciate your thoughts, do we have anything more to say about this? That's a nice polite way to do that. That's door one. Door two is any one of you. If you think that she's, that, that she has led us down this rabbit hole, you have the power too to say, Mr. Chairman, I, I think, I think we're, you don't have to say we're getting off track. I think that, that we need to get back to X, Y, or Z. So you have the, yeah, I, I'm not even sure I'd say point of order because you know some, that, you can, but that's, then you, you're sort of in this, this other land, and why bother? Come on, we all know each other, we're ju, it's a small room. So I'm, I'm, you would think the lawyer would be the most formal person. I'm the reverse in small meetings. I think that, that you, you just say what's true as opposed to being all formal about it. And so I think it would be appropriate to say, Mr. Chairman, I think that, that we're, we need to return to whatever. You don't have to accuse someone of being off the track. They were, but why accuse her? That's not necessary. I'm all about results, which is, Mr. Chairman, I think we need to return to whatever if he's not doing it. That's door two. Door three is the staff. You'll see occasionally in public meetings that the, the council all, all suggest, if I can, I'll do a little directing traffic. I'll say, well, a proper motion now is whatever. I did that earlier tonight, didn't I, when I said on the consensus? Proper motion would be this, and zing, it went through, didn't it? And that's a trick any of you can do. But if it comes to the staff, then it is, and the staff does have the ability to, to weigh in. Largely, they don't like to do that. You know, this is your, your, your meeting. And as staff, we're all of us reluctant to tell you, to, to do more than our jobs, which is to give you the information, et cetera, make recommendations. But around procedure and kind of the, the, the quality of your discussion and, and how effective it's being, that really is something you all kind of enforce on each other. You've got a chair, you've got a vice chair, and you've got, each one of you has the ability and the responsibility, I think, to, to do that. And you can do it in a polite way, you just simply can. And, and there's no reason that five, that eight, nine of you, seven of you have to kind of wait there because one of you, for good reasons, is off on this, this, this other tangent. And people, we're all sometimes a little too patient with each other, you know? Okay, that's her tangent, but I'm just going to wait. There's a polite way to, to wait for a little break in what he or she's saying. Get Scott's attention, if he hasn't already done it, and say, Mr. Chairman, I, I just wonder if we could do. already done it, and say, "Mr. Chairman, I, I just wonder if we could do this." Nine times out of 10, it'll, it'll go there. Other things. Yeah, Vivian, and then we'll do your exactions.
Not in regards to that, but it seems like the audience, as well as maybe some of us commissioners, don't understand the basis of what we're hearing. I know it says at the top, MUN, you know, approval and this and that. But I would appreciate kind of a fundamental on what that zoning is, why we're here. And that gives the audience a chance to know what they can and cannot expect from us. I know we jumped right into staff report, which is all the bells and whistles that, you know, are being presented. And I would just like a little more upfront background, not on the staff report, but just on that zoning or that case that we're hearing at that time to clarify.
Usually you have a planning 101, little slide, right?
Yeah, like for subdivisions, we'll do subdivision 101. Do you have a specific example that might be helpful? Of like a past case where you felt like you needed more background information?
No, other than maybe it's my lack of, you know, starting at the top and reading, and I go right to page three or something. I, I don't know, you know, what it is. But it just seems like even the audience would benefit from the basis of the zoning and what we're actually listening to and why, instead of us getting off topic and, you know, someone having to say, wait, we're not just voting on that, this is what we're voting on, you know? And then the public would know it too. People at home watching would also be aware of what's that specific basis that we're working from and not just the staff report that leads us down a path.
I think the intent, Vivian, of the staff report is to lead you down that path. I mean, to kind of tell that story of, you know, we have a property owner that's requested a rezoning. Let's use your example to MUN. And then we're going to, you know, try and tell a story of, you know, what the comprehensive planning is for that area, what the subarea planning is for that area, what the adjacent land uses are for that area, and how that aligns or doesn't align with the rezoning criteria. So it's
But I can't say that I ever heard that put that way. But that's pretty much what I was asking for. Sorry if you have, but I just am not getting that concept from the get-go.
Okay.
Sort of, here's what this application is and here's what it isn't.
I guess I'll say, we don't get a lot of comments or questions from you guys in advance of the hearing. We always invite that. As you've seen, we have a pretty formulaic staff report. So if there's a better or different way to be presenting or organizing some of that information that would help you or the public, we would obviously welcome that specific feedback.
I don't mean to speak for you. I'm not speaking for you, so you can correct this. It, it might have to do with the technicality and formality of those early sections. It, it, again, there's no prose attached to it. There's not a story being told. There's not, there's not a sort of strict definition of what's going on here. It's this section of the code. It's this designation. So just a kind of general discussion, I think, is what you're asking for. Just a, an informal description of what this is all about.
A narrative, sort of.
A narrative, yeah.
What the code means, what it can be, maybe, without the way it needs to be, um, specific in general, but related basis.
Okay.
And I'm, and maybe I'm not really finding, you know, information in that way. I'm just saying it's technical. And I can just be me. I can really help the audience.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, we're, in the public hearing sitting, obviously, since we're, we're making decisions based on the strict compliance with the code, we're sort of in that territory of trying to make it understandable, obviously. But the, the requirement is to, to get technical and sort of get in the weeds. We, we often talk about storytelling, so we can certainly work on our storytelling. Or if there's like an executive summary or something in the beginning that, right? You get 12-page staff reports that will feel very long, detailed, and technical. But yeah, we can, we can always do a better job communicating.
And I very much appreciate staff reports because sometimes I'm not seeing the angle on the picture or the verbiage. I'm not understanding it. But when it's being told, then, oh, that's what that means because it's not my input. And not to put any heat on the chair, but maybe once the staff report is done or pre the staff report, that's where the chair might do the narrative of why we're here, what we're here, because he's trying to control the, the reactions of the audience and the procedure and, you know, maybe.
Are you talking about, like, we're, we're here to review a subdivision tonight. We're not looking at zoning or density, whatever, like trying to create those guidelines about, like the bumpers of bumper bullying of here's, we're in this lane tonight, we're not in that lane?
But that's usually what you do. Usually you and Meredith would have a slide, and it says, like, it says, zoning 101, and it's like, we are here to discuss this zoning. We're not here to look at the individual buildings, the architecture. It goes on. And I've seen that many, many times.
When we have like four plots in a night, we won't repeat it four times. But if we need to, because there's different public coming in, we, we can do that.
Maybe, maybe we shouldn't repeat it because as a standalone for
Right.
someone looking at it online especially.
Well, let's spend a few minutes on exactions and conditions, if you don't mind. Is that all right? Okay. As a broad outline, there's sort of three things, three categories of things that you require of developers or of someone developing property. A fee, an exaction or a condition. You go, okay, what are those? And I'm not on the outline right now, so you won't see it there. I'm just going to tell you. The outline gets to it, but, but I made a little chart while we were talking about parks fees. A fee is a, a fee that you impose on a broad class of property. You have a chart. And when the property comes in, you, it's, you apply that fee to that property. Tap fees are a really good example. Wheat Ridge doesn't have water and sewer services offered by the city. But, but a tap fee is opposed on a broad class of property. If you're a residential house, a single-family home, then this is your tap fee. If you're a duplex, it's this. If you're a triplex, it's this. And the park identification fee is much like that, right? Because it's numeric. And when you come in and you know how many units there are, it's math. So that's, that's a fee. An exaction is something that you're asking a specific developer to give you based upon that specific nature of that project. So you can't go to some chart. You've got to look at that project. And a good, exactions are things that end up in public ownership. We need 10 feet of, of right-of-way. We need a sidewalk. We need, you know, lighting that's public. We need public parking. These are all things we end up with. So you're exacting it out of them. You're exacting a fee out of them too. And so I suppose a fee's a form of exaction, but it's on a broad class here that's, oh, on your project, we need this sidewalk. That's an exaction. A condition is something you require the developer to do that typically they end up owning. I used to be, I was a town attorney for Silverthorne for 30 years. And one of the conditions very often placed on a developer would be snow storage up there. You know, that's a big deal. Where are you going to put all the snow? Because they show the parking, and that's fine. But you know come February that one-third of that parking is going to be covered with snow because they push it off of the, so now all of a sudden, they only have two-thirds of the parking that they need for their use. So a condition would be, show us where the snow storage is. You need to increase that. It's going to encroach on the parking. They end up owning that snow storage area because it's their property, not public property. So they're not dedicating it to the town. Town doesn't want to own it. But that's a good example of a condition. So it's something that the developer ends up, you make him do, but he ends up owning it. Exaction is something you make him give you. So there's that. With that in mind, let's look at page five, letter F, exactions and conditions of approval. So we, we've talked about commonly imposed conditions, site design or, or timing things on the site. Exactions, land dedication, park fees, facilities to be dedicated to public use. Park fees is a fee, but in a sense, it's exacted from them. But you see the point I'm making. Want to, those of you that know all about Nolan Dolan, I appreciate your indulgence just for a minute. There are two Supreme Court cases that establish and that are, the two kind of key standards for, for placing exactions and conditions, mostly exactions on public, on development. And those have been memorialized, believe it or not, in Colorado's statutes, actually. There's a whole series of statutes that, that kind of repeat the main holdings out of these cases. But they're great cases to kind of remind us that there needs to be a, a, a nexus, a reasonable nexus relationship between a public goal to be served and the exaction you want. That's the Nolan case, and we'll give you the facts in a minute. And what you're getting out of them to serve that public need has to be rational or has to be reasoned proportionally related. What's the, what's the term of art for, for Nolan? Rough proportional, roughly proportional to the size of their impact. Okay? And it's better that I tell you the facts of the case, and that'll bring these concepts alive. Okay, a rational nexus between a public purpose and what you want from them. That's the Nolan case, Mr. and Mrs. Nolan had a house within the, the California Coastal Commission's jurisdiction, which I forget how far inland from the ocean it goes, but it's, it's the whole, you know, it's, it's way in. And they wanted to blow away the old 1950s house and build the mega house, as everyone does now. And there's not enough square feet. We all have gotten bigger or something, and we need more square feet? Tangent, sorry. So they wanted to do that. And they had to go to the California Coastal Commission to get permission to, to do the scrape and build the big house. And the California Coastal Commission said, "Well, you know, we have, our governmental issue here that we need an exaction out of you from is that it's difficult for people to get from Highway One down to the beach. And the beach is public. And access to the beach is huge. If you've ever driven Highway One, you know, you're driving, and there's this line of houses in between you and the beach. And it's really frustrating. You try, you want to get down there, but the access points are really limited. And you got to wait till you get to public beach, and it's just really hard." And so the Coastal Commission said, "We want you to give us a strip of land parallel to the beach on your private property so people can walk up and down along the beach." And they went, "Wait a minute. Your goal, getting people to the beach, is fine. But the tool you've chosen doesn't do that, does it? It lets people walk up and down along the beach. But your identified governmental purpose was to get people down to the beach from the road. Now, if you'd asked for a path perpendicular from Highway One down past our house to the beach, yeah, that would have been, that would have been a reasonable nexus between what you want to do and what you've asked me to give you. But here, you failed in that. That's the, the nexus that you have to have between what you want and what you're asking for. If the commission says, okay, this is, the, the, the public purpose here is a parking. And so the way to achieve that is you're going to give the city attorney a new car. The public purpose is fine, but I'm afraid there is no rationale, there is no nexus between the condition you've imposed. I'd love you to do it, but, you know, I have a new car now, so I'm good. I finally got a new car after 26 years. I got a new car, literally. So that's the Nolan case. What we, what we see most often isn't the nexus, but it's the Dolan case. It's the, how, how roughly proportional to the impact are you requiring this, this impact? Florence Dolan owned the A-Boy Plumbing Supply Store in Tygarde or Tigger, I think it's Tygarde, Oregon. And she owned this plumbing supply store, and that's great, and business is great, and she wanted to expand it. And that would have increased the impervious cover, right, for the parking lot. I think they were going to do addition on the building. And so, fine, okay, that's, those are drainage issues. There's a big drainage way behind the, the store. And the, the, the city of Tygarde said, "Well, we want you to do two things to address this. To begin with, there'd be more traffic to your store. And so we want you to build and enlarge a bike path." Okay? And secondly, we want you, because of the, the runoff, we want you to give us the entire drainage way behind your store. Well, the public purpose, fine, you know? More traffic, yes, you should address that. Good public purpose. But, and, but the, and maybe there's a nexus. I don't know how many people really go to plumbing supply stores on their bicycles. So I kind of question the nexus, and I really question the proportionality, and especially on the drainage. Yes, it's more impervious cover, but it's a, what, a 10% increase in the impervious cover. And we want you to give us the, because they had that drainage way in their parks master plan. And they wanted the drainage way, and they wanted the bike path. And Florence Dolan came in and we, she, they said, "We've got a live one. This is how we do this." And, no, actually, it's not how you do it. And that's happened here. There was a Public Works Director 20 years ago here, and I was still, I was here then, who really, really, they really wanted, Public Works had, had their eye on, and I forget where it was, thankfully now. But they'd had their eye on widening a given road somewhere. And one developer came in, tiny little section of it. And their idea was that they were going to get, you know, the whole, like, ultimate build-out roadway out of that developer whose impact was nowhere near roughly proportional to what they wanted. But it had been on their road master plan. So it actually happens here, and that's how it happened. So those, those are two fact patterns that you keep in mind when there's someone in front of you and you want to nick them for something. And think about whether your condition is roughly proportional to the amount of impact that you're saying that they're causing, and whether it's a Florence Dolan kind of problem. So let's see here. I'm trying to see if there's other stuff on that page. Maybe not. Let's just flip the page, because page six is the last page. So some conditions which aren't permitted, and this is, kind of goes back to what we talked about earlier. What's in front of you? Density restrictions, if you're doing site plan review. When does density get addressed? At zoning, because that's when we grant density entitlements, right? R1 is different than R, whatever the highest R is that we've got, three. Matters outside of the scope of the G, we'd like to solve this other problem that is not addressed by the code. Conditions that don't have a code basis. Conditions which actually resign the application. You can do a condition that the applicant offers. And you have to be a little careful about that. But I've written out again, I've seen applicants say, okay, I'm, it's not the plans, but I will do this. And you can make that condition a condition of your approval. But what you can't do is say, okay, is, is say, "I'm going to make this a condition, condition, condition of approval that hasn't been offered." And, and, but occasionally applicants will screw up, and they'll show stuff that really wasn't part of, didn't need to be part of the application. You go, is that a part of your application? And are you offering that? And if so, yes. Technical requirements, and that's the, I guess, the last point I make. The city's got professional staff, and that's why they review the stuff and bring that to you. And, and you need to trust that staff. If you've got questions about the technical stuff that, that they're providing to you, and you get it in your packet ahead of time, call them. But what not to do is to go, okay, I don't trust this, so I'm going to go do my own drainage study. That isn't helpful because what ends up happening, and I've seen, I had a, there was a public, I forget, it's five years ago now. What ends up happening is nobody else on the commission has that. It's a surprise when it hits the hearing. And it's, you know, if you've got real concerns, ask the staff to sharpen the pencil and then provide that to everyone. Because this is full transparency. Everybody gets everything on the commission so that you all are on the same level. And we all have our jobs to do, you know? And you're busy enough. So do your job and spend all your effort and time on grinding through that staff report and being ready. The last point I would say is, you know, I'm paid to be here, and you know that, and you're not. And I, I have enormous respect for the fact that you do this for free. And every time I get a chance to tell public bodies that I do, because as I've grown older, I've realized the enormous amount of unpaid time and attention and effort that you put into your jobs that, that are, are never recompensed. People don't thank you, you know, ever, hardly. But I am. And so I appreciate your, the work that you do and have done and will do here for the city. Questions? Questions about exactions and conditions?
What about height restrictions?
As a condition?
Technically, you could reduce the density if you took away.
Yeah, yeah, that's a kind of clever way to reduce the density. Well, we, we have allowed height limits, and they're allowed up to that limit. So to say, okay, yeah, and each zone district has a height limit, all right? So to say, okay, the condition here is, is 20 feet, yes, that affects density, but it's also not a code-supported condition if the, that zone district allows 35, which is not a code. And if you want to say, you know, in R1, we really ought to be building lower, then, then you, you know what I'm about to say, bring it to council. And of course, you, you, you see that that's not always granted by council, but doggone it, they put their names on the ballot, they're the ones that make that decision for better for worse. So.
So height restriction is allowed?
As a condition?
Can you artificially lower?
Can you make a condition to give them a lower height than they're allowed by the zoning? No.
The staff can.
No.
No.
So the only time that they, that you can give a different height limitation is if you're creating the outline development plan, you're creating the zoning. But once you've passed that, they get up to the max zoning that they've been given either in the code of plan development.
Can, can the planning commission make suggestions to city council about code changes, or do you have to do it as an individual?
Planning commission.
As a body?
As a body.
Yep.
Like, if we, if we had a discussion about maximum heights in such and such a zone, and you said, it's too high, we can, we can then propose a.
Yep, the, the right place for that, I think, was, the staff tells me different, is you've, I think on your agendas, normal agendas, you have planning commission, commissioner comments at the end usually, I think, is that what you do here?
New business.
You know, that's when to take it up and to make a recommendation. You recommend on individual projects, but you have every right to recommend, we think there needs to be a code amendment. We've seen the same issue, you know, time and time again, and it's hard for us, because we have to be hard on the applicant or the neighborhood, and, and we think that's a theme, council, and we think you ought to address that theme in something like this way. And if you've got a specific answer, fine, or if you just tell them, we think you need to work on it, that's fine, too.
So, so to go to the second part of that question, do, as members of the planning commission are, and also citizens of the city, can we, can we individually take things to the city council that are relevant to planning? As long as we make it clear that we're acting as it's a civilian and not a member of a...
Yes, and so long as they're not individ, individual application-related.
Oh, right, right, right.
You know, it's one of the few places where, I was hard on you earlier, I said, you made a deal, you know, you, you, you signed a contract, and, and you did, around individual projects, but that's legislative, you know, and they're your legislators, too, and around, and their function there would be legislative, it's not individually project-related. You may have come to that opinion because of projects you saw, and I'm fine with that. But if you say, look, I think, we, we keep hearing heights are too high or low, or whatever they are, or block plan or whatever, here's, you know, you call up your council member and talk to them. That's, that's perfectly fine. I think you have the obligation, since you made that contract, of, of making it clear and saying, you know, I come to you not as a planning commission member, but, but, and that's all you need to do around a legislative matter, fine. Yep. You've been enormously patient, and, thank you.
Quick question, just to throw a, I want to throw a bomb out there that I think we see often, traffic conditions, so maybe draw sort of two comparisons. The Corners had to install the signal and pay for the signal at Yukon and 38th Avenue. Their project extended the street all the way through and put an enormous volume of traffic. So there was a nexus and a proportionality to us requiring that that developer bear the burden of putting a public traffic signal at two public streets. A smaller, a more typical, I think, fact pattern for what we see for public comment is a smaller project, that's just sort of the icing on the cake, like the last straw. It's not huge necessarily on a 44th or a Kipling or Wadsworth, whatever it might be, an Upam. It's gonna add more traffic, because any additional single unit will add some number of traffic, we can predict that from nationally established standards. But, but it's the, not the developer's responsibility as sort of the last, most recent unit in to do some larger CIP project, that the city should be aware of the traffic volumes and patterns in the city, and needs to ultimately be the one to take the responsibility for a signal or a widening or whatever that might be.
That's right. The fact that Tygarde was behind on having funded their trails and open space drainage way program, or parks program, was not Florence Dolan's fault. And her appropriate contribution might have been some amount of money, maybe for those two programs, but not that, that whole dedication. And the same thing is true for traffic, and the case law is really clear that you don't get to, even if you've got a exaction condition fee system, you don't get to use that system to, to address pre-existing deficiencies. You know, that's general funding, man, or bonding, or whatever, you know? You've, the government, if, if there's a deficiency, that's not my fault if I'm Florence Dolan. Just because I happen to be the last one that you, your last chance to get it out of the private sector, there's a limit to that, and that, that is limited by the amount I'm contributing. And I get it that, well, it might be the straw that broke the camel's back, and it makes the, the, the light required, but it's, it's very incremental and not that whole light. Now, the, the project at Yukon, that was a big project, and, and I think that was an appropriately proportional response to say, you're on the hook for this one. And it, life being imperfect and, and inaccurate as it is, I'm sure there was probably some existing deficiencies that got picked up by that light. I'm not saying that it didn't, but to me, that, it's a whole universe of, it's a, it's a power of 10, different greater than the Florence Dolan example.
So I hear what you're saying, Lauren, on the traffic, but if you've got a specific development that you know based on any other development that's go in, that goes in, they're not the ones that are creating the traffic issue, but they're participating in it, so why can't they have an impact fee charged against them, much like they do the parkland fee, so that it pays for the future, which they are part of, but not the actual exaction point?
Yeah, so, impact fees, I know, have come up, specifically traffic impact fees. Let me first maybe answer the question relative to parkland impact fees, because those aren't really impact fees. They are truly fees in lieu of paying, of dedicating land. So the city has a requirement to dedicate land, because that, we've established that that's a requirement that we need associated with residential development, residential development in these parks. We've decided in this particular case, an actual park doesn't make sense for whatever, whatever reasons, and when that's the case, we take a fee in lieu, and that's based on what the land value would have been. So it's a little different than an impact fee, as those are contemplated under state statutes. So state statutes speak to the ability of cities to impose impact fees for traffic is a, is a classic one, but they could be for affordable housing, it could be for civic infrastructure, it could be for a variety of things, but, but traffic is indeed probably the most common. Drainage impact fees is another one that a lot of communities have. It, it ultimately is, is kind of a policy question for city council whether to do that, because they have to be, be done on a systematic way. And that's, again, contemplated under, under, under state law. The city, in my experience, has, has talked a little bit about impact fees. It's been a number of years as a potential revenue source for funding projects, such as what we're funding kind of with the 2E bond increase, which was a, a 12-year temporary sales tax increase, which was the revenue generation source that they, they chose for that list of projects. Impact, to, to do an impact fee, setting aside kind of the policy question that, that council would have to decide that they want to do that, you have to do a traffic, an impact fee study, and that's a fairly rigorous study whereby you identify, I guess, starting with, well, what traffic improvements do we need to make that, that we're gonna charge this impact fee for? And then you have to, so you have to identify a specific list of projects, put a number to it, say, well, those projects are all gonna cost $10 million. And then you're gonna have to kind of, I'm gonna just explain this in rough terms, but you're gonna have to kind of say, well, what is that delta over what the existing infrastructure that we have in streets already is? And then you're gonna have to, based on that delta, so say that's a, a 10% increase over what the existing assets of traffic impact are. And then you're gonna have to estimate, well, what, what amount of that, of that $10 million in new streets that we need is gonna be based on the people that live here right now, the 32,000 people that live here right now versus the whatever, let's say, 2,000 people that are gonna be subject to that impact fee? Because impact fees are not backward-looking, they're forward-looking, so they're only gonna be charged to new development. So at the end of the day, you know, you may be saying, okay, so you're gonna pay whatever that number is, 2 divided by 30, who can do that math real quick? 1.5, 1.5% of the, of the increase is gonna be attributed to the new development. So, you, you know, you're, you're not gonna generate a whole lot of revenue in that impact fee, because you're only gonna be able to charge 1.5% of those $10 million in projects towards that, that new development. So it's, it's a, it's a, long story short, it's a tough tool to use in a community that's largely built out. And it's an expensive tool to use, to the extent that, you know, you're gonna have to spend, I have done impact fees in other communities that I've worked with, we spent, you know, well over $100,000 doing an impact fee study that was, that was defensible in court. The reason we did that is the first impact fee study that we did was challenged in court by the development community, they didn't want to pay it, and they won. So it's, it's a, it's a great tool, it's a super great tool for tools that are, for cities that are new and growing, and really have that list of projects that isn't 10 million, it's 50 or $100 million of roads that they're gonna have to build over time, but it's a tough tool to use in a community like Wheat Ridge that doesn't have a list of projects and that's largely built out.
And I guess my question is not so much the development that's coming, but even just the development that's being built now, there will be traffic consequences if another one gets built close by or down the road. And so they're just adding to the problem that's gonna be the future. And then I've also, we've also had a couple of situations where roads were required of the developer just because the city wanted that through fare, and it wasn't necessary for the developer to put it into his development. So, you know, we do ask them to do some things that are based on city.
Is there an example of that?
Wasn't, wasn't this, this one up here at the new housing development on Vance?
Yeah, but that, I mean, that was just a.
Town center, so much so.
Oh, town center, yeah, that's just a, a normal exaction of, you know, requiring the road network that was, a local street network that was needed for their development to occur. So that, that's a, an exaction that meets the Nolan and the Dolan test in terms of...
And that was 41st that was gonna go through, right?
Yeah.
Right. And I asked Tyler if that was necessary to his development, and he said, no.
So, you know, obviously, there's a lot of reasons, from a planning perspective, why connectivity is a good thing, but if we want to talk about it strictly from a dollars and cents standpoint, we have to mill and overlay every road in the city that's a public street, and if it's a dead end, the entire city is subsidizing the mill and overlay of a dead end that serves a very limited number of people. But the more you can distribute and connect your road grid, the more we're all paying for road grid we can all use and access because it's integrated. So that's just sort of the, the economics of why you don't do code to sex. There are communities, we just learned about at the conference, where there is a fee paid if you live in a dead end, because the whole community is paying to repave your street that only five people live on. So our goal will always be, and it's codified in the subdivision regulations, to increase connectivity of the street grid. It doesn't, it's the, sort of the inverse, right, of, of the traffic argument, the developer doesn't need it, but we need it as a community at large. And when one, when each sort of individual housing unit, or clump of 20, or clump of 200, as we approve them, contribute to the community as large, that's sort of, we, we had to back up and decide, so what is our growth management plan? If we said we don't want any more traffic, it's not gonna happen, because the metro region is growing. It goes back to the NRS conversations we had. If we don't want any more growth and we don't want any more traffic, then we need to change the code, because it doesn't say you can't build here, right? And if we are gonna allow people to build based on the codes that we have, then this, then the city needs to be funding regional neighborhood traffic studies, or have a CIP funding source that is sustainable, which we don't have now, to say, okay, we know that in the next 15 years, we're gonna need to widen certain roads because of the decisions that we've made. But those larger planning transportation issues cannot, and, and should not, from a legal standpoint, be solved on the backs of sort of the development that we want a good reason to say no to.
Well, you also mentioned important point about it being regional.
Right.
I mean, we sit in the local metro area, so even what we do, we can only control congestion so much in Wheat Ridge. So Kipling's going to stay crowded and get more and more crowded, even if we allow more development to happen, because it's a thorough fair to other communities in the region.
Yeah, so, yeah, Wheat Ridge is built out relatively. We don't have many, much more room to expand. However, we're entering a period of development where we're gonna start building up, we're gonna be densifying Wheat Ridge, and we're seeing it every time we sit down. And what I'm seeing is that there's gonna be, we've already built out our street system, but there's gonna be increased demand for signalization, for additional turn lanes, for roadway widening, potentially transit, bus, bicycle, pedestrian improvements. And I don't see a mechanism to charge the newcomers. And instead, we're allowing all this densification, and all these people are moving here, they're impacting our roadways, they're forcing signals to be built, and forcing all of the changes that need to be made, and the city's taxpayers are paying for that. So we're subsidizing their impact. And that's why I wanted to take a good look at the traffic impact fees, because it just seems more equitable. It seems like, okay, you're gonna move to Wheat Ridge, you're gonna densify our community, you're gonna require a signal to be built. For instance, the, right, the one that we saw at 44th Ave, where it's a stop, there, it's a stop sign now, but eventually it's gonna have to be signalized. And who's gonna pay for it? We are. We're paying for it, not the developer and not the people who are buying those units. So to me, as we embark on this next period of densification, infill, density, and, and signalization, and, and congestion, we owe it to ourselves, it's 100K now, to do an impact fee study, we should, we should seriously look at it, or we should recommend to council that we seriously look at it. It's an investment in getting people who are going to be impacting the traffic system to pay their fair share, or at least part of their fair share.
So is that driven by city council, then?
Well, sure, I mean, any kind of an impact feast would, would require, again, the, the analysis, but it would require council support at a policy level, and then the technical details of justifying it. So, again, if it, it would, if, as a fee, it would have to go into a dedicated, you know, pot of money. So if it's a transportation impact fee, you'd have to go into sort of, some sort of transportation fund. And we'd have to have identified the fact that we have a, a funding source to augment the revenues from the impact fee to actually build the stuff that we identify. So step one, we need a transportation plan that identifies a list of projects, we don't really have that. I mean, we're, we're building out Wadsworth with money that we do have, and that's kind of the last major project that we've identified funding for, that's, that's our obligation, right? We don't have any intent of modifying 44th. We have, we're gonna certainly look at 44th as part of the 44th corridor plan, but at this time, we don't have any plans for new signals. With one exception, we're continuing to monitor Tabor. With one exception, we're continuing to monitor Tabor intersection as to whether that would warrant any additional signalization, but...
Kipling?
Well, Kipling's not our, not our deal, and we certainly don't have the resources to, to pay for it. I mean, it's a, I mean, if you want to address Kipling, it's a, you know, 150 million dollar project. I mean, that's what it is, because it's, it's an issue, and that's not even the interchange, right? The interchange alone is probably 70 or 75. COT doesn't have that money. But we certainly aren't going to improve their state highway. You know, we did it on Wadsworth, in part with our, a strong local match, and we got good tip funding. But Kipling isn't high on the radar for tip funding at the, at the state level. And as you're all probably aware from just being Colorado citizens, you know, we don't have a lot of money to build transportation facilities. So, I, I appreciate the, the notion of, you know, new development kind of paying its way, but the, the realities of where we're at is, there's just a lot of obstacles for us to being able to effectively and meaningfully implement an impact fee. The one impact fee that council has talked with some seriousness about is a drainage impact fee. As, as you probably all know, living in this community, we've got a lot of drainage issues, and that's, I think, a legacy of the fact that we were developed kind of haphazard as unincorporated Jefferson County and didn't really require drainage facilities that, like you would in, in current day. And that's gained some traction, but ultimately, there hasn't been council support for that, which in my mind is something that, you know, the community could get their arms around, just because I think a lot of people experience those issues in a real firsthand way.
Are there any other questions for Jerry?
You guys have been great, thank you very much.
Could I sneak one in? Because I think this is directly for you.
It has to be by 10 o'clock, we've got nine minutes.
Okay, this, this won't take...
I know, but I'm imposing an arti, I'm imposing an artificial deadline...
That's okay.
...for the purpose of being done.
I was going to say, if this doesn't have a short answer, I'm going to withdraw the question. I, I, I was, when I was, I've been thinking about this for a long time, actually. What's the scope of the questions we should raise at our meetings? I mean, here's, here's the answer that I would anticipate, that the questions we should ask are the questions that are relevant to the business we're doing. And, and, I'm sorry, but not about traffic studies, which we don't do, right? So...
What we allow, allowed to be done has an impact on traffic.
But we don't do traffic studies, so the scope of the questions shouldn't really go to traffic, should it?
Not usually, no. What's interesting here is, you all care, and as a result of being on the commission, you, you see this stuff, and I think a struggle for you, and it's, moralizing your question, I'm glad you got the question, a struggle for you is saying, okay, on this application, while I am aware of and care about the, the fate of the city, and its, its need for parks, and its, its aging infrastructure, and the fact that you've got aging commercial on 38th and on Wadsworth and on, on 44th, and how do we deal with that from an economic development standpoint, you know? But today, the application is for this. And much as I'd like to, you know, do more, this is what I'm doing today on that, but I'm a citizen, I'm also a member of the commission, the commission, I as a citizen, members of the commission, the commission as a whole can say to the council, this is a recurring theme for us that we see through the individual projects that we review. Our ability to apply the Chapter 26 of the individual projects is, is limited to that, and it is not a good tool for advancing these other issues, but that's not that they shouldn't be addressed. We think you ought to address them. That's kind of how to do it, and I think what ends up happening, because the thing in front of you is this project, and, and you'd like, and you'd like to be able to kind of wrap all this other stuff here, because you see, the world is all interconnected, and you see it touching this other stuff, and it does, but it doesn't touch it in the way that you can on that application, I'm glad you asked the question, sort of generate an answer, but it doesn't mean that those issues aren't answerable and are, and should not be followed up on in some way, just not on that application. Well done, thank you.
I'm going to take, I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to take one. So, you know, I think on the traffic issues, obviously, you know, you're going to be sitting on the planning commission, you're going to get people to testify with concerns about traffic, right? I think the right questions for you to ask of us are, you know, what traffic information was required? Has staff reviewed a, you know, traffic analysis for this? Has there been a traffic report? In certain cases, the answer will be no, right? That it, that this particular application didn't trigger a traffic study, because it was too small, didn't generate enough trips. You know, I know traffic came up, and I, I wasn't in attendance at the hearing, but came up in the discussion of the Riverside Terrace at 44th and Tabor. You know, rough math, townhomes generate about six trips a, a day, six, seven, something like that. That's straight from the IT trip generation panel. The two projects that are, that are now kind of both approved in, together, were about 40 units, right? So you're talking 240 units or trips, of new trips generated. That portion of, of 44th carries about 14,000 cars, I believe, don't quote me on that. So you're talking about, you know, increasing traffic by about, you know, 1, 1.5%. So it's just, it's really hard to tell that 1.5% generator that you're going to do eh, right? I mean, that just, that's hard to do. So, in terms of what questions to ask, ask us if we've asked those questions, and then that gives us the ability to kind of put some of that math to it and tell, tell you why, as much as the, you know, the neighbors are legitimate in being concerned about whatever the traffic issue is, why we can't reasonably and roughly proportionally ask them to make some sort of a, an improvement.
Rhetorical questions are always okay. We see that a lot more on council than we do from planning commission, where you know what the room wants to hear, you know the answer, but, and we know you know the answer, but we're stating things for the record and the benefit of the audience. So, it's, you know, because you were the staff report, we got a traffic report, but it's okay to say, can you confirm a traffic report? You know, very, very common at council to get rhetorical questions. Here's one, is everybody ready to go home?
It's time for the 10 o'clock news.
Is there any more new business?
There, we will have a meeting on October 17th.
Okay. Is there any old business? Motion to adjourn? Raise your hand to vote. Adjourned.